One minute. We're ready to go.
Is that captions on?
Everything's good to go.
Right.
Okay.
Wait. Oh, no.
Yeah, no, we're recording. I was right the first time. I should second against myself.
Motion to call the meeting to order. Is there a second, please?
A second.
Do a call.
Trustee Marshall.
Hi.
Trustee Coe. Hi. Trustee Lanfair.
Hi.
Trustee Liken.
Hi.
Mayor Palmer.
Hi.
Motion passes.
Okay, does any board member have any conflict of interest or anything to disclose regarding the agenda items this evening?
I do not.
I do not.
I do not.
I do not.
I do not. Okay, with that being said, would be clerk, please read the open meeting compliance certification.
We're gonna do the flip note version.
Okay.
Basically, if you want to speak to the board, please raise your hand. We'll call on you and come up to the front. Please provide your name and address. If you are participating via Zoom, please put your answer in Q and A. If you would like me to ask the board the question, if you would like the answer to the board the question, please raise your hand and we'll call you at the first opportunity. And we try to treat each other respectfully. Thank you.
So with that being said, is there any public comment? Okay. On to department reports. Building inspector report. Well, Steve could not be here in person tonight. So I think if there's anything we want to discuss about his report, we can, but we can certainly direct, you know, questions right to him, obviously. We all have a copy of that. Okay. Next up.
Do you want to talk about the grease trap?
Yeah, we're gonna do that with DPW. Yeah. Because that's your, yeah, yeah. No, we definitely wanted to talk about that.
It's kind of both.
Yeah, it's both, but DPW report.
Hi Zach.
Hi Zach.
Any questions for Zach or should we just start talking about the grease trap issue? Yeah, yeah. That's what I, yeah, because that go right to the grease. Yeah, we're going right to grease trap. As you mentioned, and I was gonna send you an email about it, the history, been around for a lot of those cleanouts.
Yeah.
So I'm aware of a number of them. It seems to me that we might want to discuss going forward how to deal, maybe deal with the owner directly because apparently whatever equipment they're using is not effective. That's the way it appears. Is that the way it appears to you as well?
Yeah, it's, it's, it could be an oversight and management, you know, not paying attention to the kitchen staff or the room. It's a possibility where everything is functioning the way it's supposed to, is doing it. But it's just a product of a lot of kitchen cooking.
Zach, for the record, can you just state the issue?
Yeah, numerous issues with the sewer in front of the Del Monte, it's on spot, which is causing fat oils and grease buildup in the sewer pipe, which is causing restrictions in plugging out of the sewer main.
Does it primarily affect the area out front of their space?
And it's been consistent over since you've all been here. I would like to say, having worked in the business years ago, in another lifetime, in other communities, there's essentially either twice a year, once a year, grease trap inspections per facility, and that's something that we may want to take a look at.
Yes.
And then also, you know, and there should be a fee, I think, associated with that, but also there's your time and your labor of your crew to fix it.
Yeah.
And it's always an emergency situation because this is an ongoing business. So it's not as though, gee, we hope they can fix it. They, why do we want them working in our, on our line? So I think we, as a board, should look at that. And Jeff, you and I had a brief conversation about that, and I, I don't know if you have any additional thoughts on that, but I, I think we should really take a look at this.
Yeah, Zach and I talked about a little bit at the holiday luncheon.
Good topic for a holiday luncheon.
We were actually done with the luncheon. You know, I think you should do something like to do with the bushing weeds where if the village has to do it, the village gets paid for it.
Okay.
To detect nuisance.
No, it's just, we're doing work for them.
Yeah, maintenance.
Yeah, we're doing work for them.
We're doing repairs.
If they're not capable of doing it, they don't have the equipment.
Not only, I would not, yeah.
Right. So maybe you do a, maybe you combine that with a semi or annual grease trap inspection, require them to keep a log.
That's what we used to do.
Unless you have some monetary impact of the actions, you know, you may not see a lot of improvement.
And so currently, there really isn't any mechanism in our code?
You could probably do violations.
As a violation? You know what I'm thinking too, and maybe this is something that internally we could look at, you know, I'm thinking of like East Rochester, Fairport, they're larger than us, but they have a lot of restaurants, and I'm sure there's some mechanism that they may have, maybe we should do a little bit of research, let's bring this back to the board, take a look at what's out there, maybe talk about, you know, make a recommendation about how to move forward, because I do think we need to do something. You know, this is consistent.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yes, and maybe make it mandatory when we're looking at adding restaurants to existing spaces, that that's part of the infrastructure that we're looking at, so that going forward, even anticipatory.
I think that's part of Steve's inspection.
It is. It's required under law to have a grease trap.
So.
You know, but it's the maintenance.
You know, we can, we really can't cover this in the permit because it's, it's a violation, you know, of our store model ordinance, because the sewer, probably.
Sanitary.
Probably sanitary. It's committed to the sanitary, yeah, so violation of the sanitary sewer ordinance. So I just, I think you have to, have to bill for the cost if they don't pay it, it goes on their taxes.
Is it possible to have a restaurant surcharge based on where the blockage is and who's above the line, based on the number of seats or the occupancy or something? So for example, at any given point along the line, the surcharge can be calculated in order to ensure clean operations. And so if you have three restaurants above the blockage, based on seating or occupancy, every time it has to get done, they all get a bill.
It's proportionally.
Right, proportionate. That way you don't have to say the pub versus the hotel. Yeah, and instead of it being a penalty or a violation, you just simply, we create a law that has, every time we clean it out for a grease restaurant-related blockage, we just bill based on everybody above where you have to clean to.
Yeah, it's the same thing. It's just that that law also has to provide that it's gonna be a lien against the property collecting like a tax.
I know, I think it's a good way to look at it. But I think when we do the research, they're making something already out there.
Yeah, okay.
That we can bring back to the board, you know, taking a look at what other municipalities have done, because this isn't a first rodeo. I think for a lot of communities.
Problematic, right?
Yeah.
Can you identify which restaurant you think it is from when you clean it out?
Well, I can only try to take, you know, the evidence that I see. It's happing directly out in front of the Del Monte. They have a section of sewer that runs from their side of the road. Sewer main is on the other side of the road, so there's a section of sewer that connects to the other side of the road that is also vacuumed and low grease. Now.
So it's still relatable?
It's not relatable. So it's technically the sewer main, there's just two separate sewer mains connected by a cross connection.
There's a connection.
My guess is that it's happing from the Del Monte, what's the name of the restaurant there?
Erie Grill. So the Erie Grill.
Erie Grill. And it's quite possible that when it's being washed through their system, it's going through extremely hot water, so most of the grease is fairly liquid. And when it hits the cooler waters up in the road, it's just solidified, that's the problem. Now, you also have full tower, landings, and sort of crepes upstream of that, which, not to say that they have no heart in this, their lines are fairly clean.
Right.
Yeah, you can check the lines.
Yes, my idea wouldn't work in that regard. It'd be more of a penalty to somebody who's not causing the issue.
Yeah.
Right.
I mean, just, that's the evidence that I see, you know.
Yeah.
It's consistently in the same place.
They're just recently cleaned out over there.
Yeah.
Not to say that they don't have grease system, it might just be, you know, everything kind of co-mingling at that point causing this problem, you know, one thing compounds the other.
But it's consistently in the same place, by the Del Monte.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's not down by, by simply crusts.
Okay, so then.
So who's gonna do the research?
Steph. We'll bring it back internally.
Okay.
Yeah, exactly. Steph will, Steph will do the research and we'll try to turn, turn this around, because this really is on the record. Yep.
Sure. Yeah. Did you also have a request of the board regarding a class, classes or was that, you were just making a statement? I can't remember what.
Well, yes, a request because in order to maintain, as I stated in my report, in order to maintain a certification for a corporate office, I have to have so many professionals available hours a year. This class is three days long, it's in March, and it will cover all the hours needed to maintain that. There's a, there's a quarter dollar cost for, for the classes, and there's an initiation fee into, it's $100 or $60. So, yeah, those costs, and I just don't have time to worry about.
That's within our budget.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's training, but you know, it's, it's not necessarily some kind of job, you know, or however we're going forward with that, so I'm not gonna just sign myself up with that.
Yeah, no, but it's all good.
So we don't, do we need a motion?
I, I don't think we do. It's just additional training.
Additional training.
What are you just gonna say?
It never hurts to have a motion since it is expenditure.
For, for how much?
It's like $400.
$460 for the class in the eight hours.
Okay.
Just to be on the safe side, it's just.
Sure, hang on, then it's on the record. Motion?
Made.
I'll second.
Okay, trustee Liken.
Hi.
Trustee Lanfair.
Hi.
Trustee Coe. Hi. Trustee Marshall. Mayor Palmer.
Hi.
Motion passes.
Okay. Anything else for Zach?
Well, I was gonna go over this along with Peter Bush, bicycle path.
That's off the agenda.
Yeah, but I think Peter stuck around because he thought that I was gonna still be discussing this.
Wasn't aware of that.
Yeah, I mean, North Main Street Bridge, I'm planning on, in December's meeting, and it was tabled until Peter came back, but I could talk about an hour.
Do we have that information in our packet?
It was in the original packet on Friday, but.
I pulled it out today, she received it on Friday, so.
Oh, so we don't have it in front of us?
And I don't have it now.
Yeah.
You have it.
I do.
Yes, you do.
And that's the original?
Mm-hmm. And Lisa has the original.
Thank you.
Yeah, but the, was it?
It's still up on the website.
Still on the website?
The original and the update is on the website. I keep both.
So the only change is what was sent out to the board?
To the board.
Okay.
The board received both.
And, and everybody, here with a hit.
So this is for the purchase of two mirrors underneath the North Main Street Bridge, one on each side of it. I did some research and there's a mirror that's underneath the Quill Street Bridge, everyone's seen there, and it's fairly large and set up properly in a way that's well off the path, you know, unless someone's really trying to get to it, you know, it's mostly not gonna get damaged as quick as it has been previously here. It's just, it was an obligation expense. It's about $1,000 for setup for local.
But it's, it's for safety.
It's for safety.
It's a safety measure, and it has been in the past as well.
Yeah, we've gotten good, positive responses from the mirror that was there that was, you know, half, not quite to the same standards as these would be, so.
These are heavier duty?
Yeah, heavier duty, bigger, better visuals.
So we're replacing one mirror that was damaged and adding one mirror? Is that the?
Yeah.
Sort of expanding the safety.
Yeah, I mean, we're not replacing a height, a little bit larger, sturdier.
Something that would be more effective, but it's maybe more expensive, but we're looking at something that's increasing safety and it's more effective. Am I understanding that based on your proposal?
Yes.
Okay.
So the 20 by 30 is what you're talking about?
Well, there are two, and I guess it'd be a board's decision on which one they want to buy. So there's a 24 by 36, and this one has a plastic back and double telescopic brackets, and then there's another 24 by 36 that has a galvanized steel back.
Which one is, do you think, would last longer?
The more durable one would be.
What style number is that?
I'm sorry?
What style number is it?
DRTGB 24 by 36.
What's the difference?
I see them. Oh, but a mark star. I thought that was part of the, of the.
The one that would be more durable is $516 a piece, and the one with the plastic back is $320.
I see.
A piece.
Yeah, a piece.
Now, are those mirrors underneath the overpass, so they don't get the weather per se? So is durability, I mean?
It's not so much the weathering on it, it's the kids coming through and smashing, or I shouldn't say kids, it's whomever is going underneath the bridge and eating it, tagging it with scraping or hitting it.
Yeah, they're squirting.
Right, yeah, I get that, but I mean, the durability of it, if somebody's gonna spray paint it or smack it, it's gonna get injured, whether.
Possibly, but this will, this stuff will allow us to get enough off the path a little bit higher, so someone will have to work a little harder to do stuff.
Have to bring a ladder?
You mean for both of them?
Well, there is a plastic.
You mean for both of them?
Yeah.
Both, both types.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah, yeah.
The more durable one, right. So I'm saying, so do we want to spend $500 for, for mirror, or do we want to spend $300?
Yeah, so like a $400 difference is what I'm hearing?
There might be a little difference.
There's 400 and something?
Yeah.
Okay. Any, any other comments from the board members on this? I mean, I think we need the mirrors. I think it's a good idea. We need a safety.
Check the durability. Would it be a manner of replacing them yearly if they get broken every year?
It's hard to say. I mean, you know, you might have times that we go down and fix the one mirror that was there, was quite often.
Was that a plastic?
It's a prior layer type of situation.
Was that a plastic back mirror?
Uh, yes, it was a plastic back mirror. It's parabolic, but it, it was smaller.
And the location was different, right?
The location was different. It was more accessible. These might go a year, might go two years, it's hard to say.
My suggestion would be go for better quality, and if you get a couple extra years, you're saving the replacing cost of replacing more often.
The total replacement.
Yeah.
If these only last, you know, if they get destroyed in the first few months, then we go with the lesser value, you know, because it's not gonna destroy anything, right?
Yeah.
So.
Does this include shipping?
Probably not. I can't give you a total on this. Again, I thought this was told from, from meeting, so.
See, no, I'm going the other way. I'm going, we're putting it higher so it's less likely to get banged. And I'm saying go for the less expensive, and if we find that it's getting damaged because of the plastic backing, then we know the next time we replace that we do. But it may be getting damaged just from the front of it, it may not have anything to do with the plastic backing.
That's a possibility.
So, I don't, I suppose in my mind.
Yeah, I, I, you know, I think you can make a case either way. I mean, the assumption is being made that they're going to be hit.
Yeah, and if it gets hit hard enough, it's either gonna crack the plastic back, the back of it, or.
Or the front of it.
Or the front of it.
If it's a galvanized backing and it just cracks the mirror, do you have to buy the whole unit, or can you replace the mirror in the back?
I think you have to replace the whole.
Oh, so either way, it's an entire replacement. Okay, so that's helpful for us to understand that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I say plastic.
Okay, so someone make a motion. Let's move forward.
I.
Go ahead.
Oh. I make a motion to approve two of the plastic backed, larger size mirrors on the canopy.
I'll second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Trustee Marshall.
Hi.
Trustee Coe. Hi. Trustee Lanfair.
Hi.
Trustee Liken.
Hi.
Mayor Palmer. Hi. Motion passes.
Okay, two plastic back mirrors on the way.
Thank you.
No, that's great. I mean, it's helpful.
Yeah, I think a lot of.
Okay. Anything else for us? Just living.
Just employee matters that I was.
Yeah. Okay. All righty. And, thank you. Okay. Next up, treasurer's report.
Yes, we have the abstract 18 for approval. Is there any questions or concerns on that? It's a small one because we did one last week.
Yeah, we really loaded it up. Okay. Is there a motion?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Can you entertain a motion?
Make a motion to approve as presented. I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Liken.
Hi.
Trustee Lanfair.
Hi.
Trustee Coe. Hi. Trustee Marshall. Mayor Palmer. Hi. Motion passes. Okay, so next I have our service contract for the RIT company, we have used our hours, and we need another contract to please the board to give me 50 hours at 4750. Can I please have that authorized?
Do you know about what you use this year?
We use a little more this year because, actually, I think we got this around May, June, and we did the cabling, we've done some other things, some equipment, different things.
We had some of the upgrades.
Some upgrades, so we probably use a little more. Usually 50 hours lasts me a year or a little over a year.
Oh, okay, so this essential, this cost will go as long as it takes you to use 50 hours.
Right, as long as those are.
Yeah, there's no expiration. I see where you're going with that.
Yeah.
Yeah, the hours are, we, I make everybody go through 20 steps before we call.
Paid upfront?
It's paid upfront. They don't expire, and it's cheaper than buying, paying per hour for the calls, so it's always worth to have the contract. I go the full 100 hours, but that seems a little, it's too much, so 50 is always been a sweet spot for us.
Yeah, this has been pretty standard year after year.
It's been pretty standard.
I'm just debating the 100, too.
Like I said, it, it sounds great, but I'm usually budgeted for 50, so.
And we can't pay that amount over two years.
No, you don't pay it on. So, yeah, it's, it is tempting.
It is. I'll make a motion to approve 50 hours, contract C as presented. I'll second.
Okay. Trustee Lanfair.
Hi.
Trustee Liken.
Hi.
Trustee Marshall.
Hi.
Trustee Coe. Hi. Mayor Palmer.
Hi.
Motion passes. Let me ask the board for additional funding for our employees' HSA. They have used their hours, so it would be for Francine, so it would be the additional to bring her up to the year.
Motion as stated.
So, second.
I'll second.
Okay. Trustee Liken.
Hi.
Trustee Lanfair.
Hi.
Trustee Coe. Hi. Trustee Marshall.
Hi.
Mayor Palmer.
Hi.
Motion passes. Next is the tax levy override. We do this every year just as precautionary, and we just set a public hearing for that so we can, we just in compliance, we pass it just in case we go over the cap. It's, the penalties for not having it in place, and if we inadvertently did go over it, is substantial, so it's always worth having it, God, it's just precautionary. The board's been doing this well before I even came.
Yeah, this also is the recommendation of NITECON, I believe, to all the municipalities, to the villages, you know.
So I would set that public hearing for February 13th, if the board is in agreement.
You're moving the tax levy override to a hearing?
Yeah.
Okay.
So that's February 13th at 7:00?
No, we moved that.
Oh, we moved it, that's right, we did, 6:00. Okay.
Just a, a quick comment before we, we do this. I, I know that it's been treated as procedural and kind of a rubber stamp every year. I don't think that, my interpretation of the comptroller's position on this is not that we just go ahead and approve it without consideration, but I think that the, this depends on, on our confidence in the budget and what we're looking at doing financially. So I'm okay with moving this ahead to public hearing. I am not decided yet on whether or not I would support it. I think that depends on, on what we understand in terms of the budget between now and then.
Okay, and it depends on the public, with the public hearing as well, so.
Could I ask a quick question related? Does anybody know if assessments will be known, new assessments, or is it the same?
I haven't heard yet.
I haven't heard any.
I need to reach out to.
How long has it been since there's been any assessment updated?
Before COVID.
Before COVID.
It was before COVID because they were supposed.
Before COVID, I think COVID was gonna be the year that it was increased, and then they tabled it back because of COVID, and I'm not sure if it's happened, because we're always a year behind when the assessment has changed, so I'm not sure. You know, obviously.
Maybe we should reach out again and see if we can get that information.
Yeah, I can reach out.
And you can just send a memorandum to the board if she hears anything.
I'm just curious whether or not we'll have a different assessment number going into the budget.
Oh, we'll have a different assessment number. I don't know which way it'll go, because if it stays on this path, usually it breaks Because if it stays on this path, usually it breaks down until the assessments are brought up to full value.
Yeah, when is that part gonna happen?
That idea.
You don't know, and unlikely to be before budget process, right?
If it was done already, actually, you'd be better to tell me. If your tax bill reflected a hundred percent of your assessed value, then your tax bill would have been higher for the town next year. So now would be the time, I would see it this year. Because we're always a delay, we're the last to use the council.
Got it.
So I can reach out, I'm letting the board know. It's a phone call and I need to get the word from him.
The reason I ask is obviously property values are the way that under a fixed rate tax assessment, right? Property values are the way you adjust for inflation. Absent of a assessed value increase over time, the only way to address inflation in the budget is through a higher levy. And so there's this balance between the two and the timing of them is lumpy, so. Anyway, I'll make a motion to move the.
Local law, too.
Yeah, local law to public hearing on February thirteenth.
Thirteenth at six o'clock. Six P M. A second.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Lyken.
Hi.
Trustee Lankier.
Hi.
Trustee Coe.
Hi.
Trustee Marshall.
Hi.
Mayor Plummer.
Hi.
Motion passes. Thank you so much. And I believe that is all I have for the board this evening.
Okay, okay. Next up, review of a special permit for Five State Street.
Come up.
Yep.
I'm here with Randy Peacock, Mike Reynolds, you guys all, well, me. Randy's our barrette, so I'm gonna call on him. I'm sorry, I'll land here in case. Okay, great. Thanks for the support. I'm just kidding. Um, Randy works with our family and so you guys, you know me, I'm back. So, uh, owner of Five State Street, uh, you know, has spoken with some of you in the past and we all know each other from the events of the past year. We are, uh, tonight want to talk about moving forward with a special permit for a restaurant at our property. To give a little background and context, uh, you know, our property is unique to the village in a lot of ways. It is unique in how the village has been planned and laid out and where it sits. We've spent a lot of time thinking about how we want to move forward with the property as, as owners and as a family. And I think I, as I've said in the past, we're generational owners, like this is not a, you know, an asset that we're, I'm a real estate developer, right? This is something my, our family has owned for thirty years and expects to have for a long time. And so we're taking a very, you know, instead of just as a landlord, we're actually taking a much more forward position in what's gonna make sense in the space that's gonna fit the comprehensive plan, that's gonna be something that is a profitable and successful business. Because our property is unique in its footprint and what we can do and what we've seen has worked in the past. And so we're presenting, you know, a, a request for a special permit for a restaurant. What I can tell you about it, happy to answer questions. First, first question I can answer is that we do have a grease trap, uh, so. Rachel's did operate for a number of years and had a friar and it was successful and to our knowledge never had any issues. But in any event, uh, you know, the infrastructure in our building is there for what we think is a, a high-end American-style grill pub. A, think of it as a flatboard menu with a good selection of, of food. We are looking to target kind of more higher ends, you know, this is not, you know, napkins and, and fast food and, and takeout. This is, you know, sitting in, a real experience with glass beverage, you know, good beverages, good selection of, of wine and beer. Would be getting a, a liquor license. And, uh, you know, our footprint, if you look, is not huge. And so the initial plan would be to open up as is with our existing parking, not as a converted outdoor seating yet. We would like to get up and running, get the interior figured out, ideally before the eclipse, actually, is part of the reason why we're here and like to move forward. But, um, you know, we don't intend to develop the parking lot into a seating area yet. We are gonna use the no parking variance that's been approved and in, in place from our, our prior applicant, from the planning and zoning board. So, um, we would like to use that, we will be using that, that variance as part of our application and then, um, moving forward with something.
I'm gonna ask you to hit the pause button here because I think this is a concern that the board has and other board members can certainly weigh in.
Yep.
Um, because your application is relying on that variance.
Mayor?
Yeah.
Can I ask for clarification?
Yeah, sure.
I, I, I talked to the code enforcement guy and he said that your proposed use needs fourteen seats. Is that not correct?
Fourteen parking spaces.
Fourteen parking, yeah.
I'm sorry. I don't know the exact number, but our, our view is that the no parking variance that was passed for the FABR president in place doesn't require our parking obligation for us.
You said, can I just?
Yeah, please, let me.
You, you said that it would rely on the previous variance, but that's not really what it is. I mean, I'm not trying to trick you, but what you, what you're relevant is it's relying on the just rented variance, which is the subject of litigation. Is that right?
Yeah, that, that variance passed in April twenty, twenty-three.
Right.
Yes.
Is, is a variance we rely on?
Yes.
Okay. That's what, sorry.
And, and so we've, um, and Jeff has been helpful in this, as has Mindy and with our attorney to really understand the interpretation and the, our reading of that variance is that it can be used for this, this purpose.
I, I appreciate your, your thoughts on this. However, the variance that you're, you're using for this application is, is, is under litigation.
Understand.
So, I mean, we can't all say yes it passed at a certain point in time, but now it has been brought before.
Yep.
The court. Hang on, I'd, I'd like to be able to finish, finish my thought. Thanks so much. So, um, and, and again, the board members can weigh in as well, but, you know, I think our concern is here. This isn't about saying no. You know, we're excited to have, have something go in there and to have it activated and all of that. I think that's absolutely wonderful and I think all the board members would agree. We all want this, but, um, what you're looking at, that piece, that variance, is under litigation right now. And so, um, I'm of the mind that maybe we just need to defer this and, and have this litigation resolved. You know, and maybe our attorney, you know, this is for our attorney's advice as well, but Jeff, if you'd like to add to that in any way.
I think, I think we have, I know you're prepared to take the risk, evidently, um, that you're gonna get in there, it's gonna be successful. The decision could come down in a negative way on these variances. And then where does that leave us? You gotta work hard to just shut it down. I mean, it's, we don't, we, we really don't wanna be in the business of shutting down a successful business. Um, I know it feels a little bit like we're stick, that the board is standing in the way of development. But if you would come in here and said, we're relying on the variance from nine to whatever it is, the old variance, I don't think the board have a problem going forward with the review of this application. But the fact that, that the one could be pulled out from under after you're up and running.
Sure.
I think that's what I'm hearing is the board concerned.
Yeah, I think you expressed it better than certainly I did, you know, because we, we, we wanna have something in there that's gonna be great and successful. We really do. But I think, you know, the, the, um, the factor that we're really looking at is, is the current litigation.
Yep.
And, and how that would play out one way or another, and, you know, whether it could, you know, we have to take a look at our village and what's gonna protect our village as well, too. And so it's, it's not a no, but I, I would hope that the board would be interested in deferring this, you know, just a deferral until we have this litigation resolved.
Okay.
Yeah, any, any other thoughts from the board in this?
No, I, I would agree with that, uh, with everything that's been said. I, I appreciate the application and I really wanna see this location succeed. Some of the things that you've said tonight help us to, help me to better understand the concept and all that. And I hope that as soon as the litigation is resolved, to move this forward more quickly. If you could work with our building inspector and provide just a little bit more detail based on his instructions so that we can all understand this better and have all the pieces in ready once it's good to go.
I have a question for you. Would you ever consider, I mean, I don't even know if this is possible, but moving forward, but using the old variance, which has less seating, right? And then if the variance is passed, then you could pump it up, I don't even know if that's possible, to your full desire, which you're presenting here today. And if it doesn't, you still have your restaurant going with a smaller amount of seating. I mean, I don't know if that's doable or.
I guess the question is interpretation of, it's the Rachel's variance, which is from twenty nineteen, which is not as intensive to be used, but gives us five, I think, parking spaces that are, that are there now.
Where, where nine would otherwise, where nine would be required.
So, um, that variance we can't, we, we can use if we change our seating arrangement.
Right.
Now, my view is that if we were to do that, it's not profitable, doesn't make sense for us to open under, under that. Now, if we went through it so that we can start the liquor license process and all this, I'm still coming back for another approval to, to my seating to then match the variance, assuming the court comes through. I took it as more risk. I don't wanna have to come back, all due respect, I don't wanna have to come back. We've, my family has been through a lot in the last year with this property, okay? This is, you know, it's a, it is a very frustrating process. We are willing to take the risk and to some extent, you know, to the extent that risk is too high, we'll be willing to say, okay, well, our permit is, you know, as far as CO is subject to that litigation going through. The, the problem is the litigation was heard by the court in August. Criminal cases are gonna jump ours for who knows how long. I mean, we could be looking at years. I also have been worried about the precedent that this sets at the village, that now anybody, any other business owner that wants to block a business in the village could just open litigation and automatically puts things to a stop, whether it's passed or pending. I don't think that's a really good precedent. And I know our, I know I'm biased that our case is, is strong, but we have front of the court. You know, we're willing to take that risk, if it were reversed, we would come back, we would get the proper approvals, but, you know, it's.
Did I hear you say that you were willing to have the CO condition on the litigation being concluded?
Likely, yeah, yeah. I mean, to some extent, if, 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 we wanna get started because there's a lot of things that we need to do to get this investment and we have a, frankly, more context. We have a clock ticking on taxes. The taxes don't stop and we don't have a tenant, you know, and those are going nowhere but up. We're also dealing with a former, our former tenant that, you know, has, has caused a lot of challenges as well. So to some extent, I, I would like to understand the details around that, I mean, the devil's in the details. I would, if there is a middle ground where we can move forward and it's a final approval, maybe we do the public hearing and we go through all the motions and your approval, we can work out some arrangement that mitigates the village's risk and we're willing to, to bear it or something. If we move forward on that basis, I just, I don't wanna have the whole process wait until some huge, some unknown date, one for the precedent, that's, and two, because that could be a year from now.
Well, that would mean that you could get your, well, wouldn't get your SCO for the.
Yeah, understood, but at least then I would be four months ahead, not starting the process when that happens, but I at least would, you know, make up for lost time or we can make the investment needed. I mean, we, we, we do have confidence in the outcome of that case and whether it goes in the opposite direction, we, we do think we'd be able to fight it and.
That was my question.
Well, that year, I'm gonna have to consider that, too, is how long are you gonna, you know, make us suffer from, from this? So not, not to, not to be.
This is not us.
Sorry, that came across wrong.
We're, we're, we're not making.
You, you have risk tolerance, I totally understand that, so I didn't mean to do that. It's, it's a challenge.
It's more of a, well, you know, it's a risk, it's a, you know, it's a possibility. We wanna get ourselves into, into the position of having to try to revoke something that's occurring. But if you're willing to say that our COO, your COO will not be issued until that litigation is resolved.
That's something different.
That, that, that is something different and, uh, I think I would recommend, it's something we never talked, I haven't talked to the board about.
Yeah.
But it's something that I think we could do.
Well, it minimizes our risk.
Yeah. It does. You would invest, you would invest time.
Right.
In this application.
But either way, they would wanna have a restaurant.
But one of the conditions, if you decide to move forward, one of the conditions of special permit would be that the CO is not issued until, um, this litigation is resolved favorably to the variances.
If I have any resolved, there's a lot of, there's a lot of the detail here that I would, but.
And I haven't talked to the board about this.
Totally, and I, what I, what I would like to do is if we could move forward, there's no approval happening tonight other than having a public hearing set, I believe, are moving forward, right?
Yeah.
So I don't think, continue the process, and if you call me in two weeks and said we changed your mind, we wanna stop, that's fine. Maybe we get to the final approval and you say we wanna put it on ice and you'll just approve it when the litigation's through. I would at least like to make some steps forward so that we're not sequentially waiting for some hugely, you know.
You just wanna keep.
I would like the process to move and if there is a middle ground with a CO or, or maybe we have seating in one arrangement that, and a CO that changes litigation. There's a lot of other ideas, I guess if you're open to working with me to mitigate your risk and.
Well, you, you made it clear that you're willing to assume a certain level of risk that we weren't aware of until now. Right, all of the risk.
Yeah.
Because my concern would be that, here you have it built out, you're ready to open and you can't get your, your CO so then you consequently sue the village because you've invested all of this money.
No.
It may, no, you can't hold it.
Not if, not if, not if the permit, if, if the permit is not challenged for that condition. That if it's a valid permit and it goes unchallenged, becomes a real permit, when I say unchallenged, I mean legally challenged, and it survives that challenge, or, I mean, if it survives the period in which a challenge may be made and becomes, in that sense, a, an unassailable permit, we don't, the village doesn't have any risk.
Yeah, if the conditions aren't satisfied, the permit does not move forward.
Yeah, I can't, yeah, exactly. And if we're getting a liquor license, I need to have a valid permit, so.
Well, you, you, you.
And so the part of this is because we're getting a liquor license, we would like to have a permit, even condition on certain things with the CO.
But that's a whole other separate process.
It's a whole other process that we need to do. So that's where if we're waiting for a judge's decision, I still have a lot of time, I still have a lot of things to do, subject to that judge making.
So is this something that we need to speak with our attorney privately about?
If you think you do, then again, right now.
Is there a board member who would like to have a quick recess or counsel, legal, legal counsel? Or are you comfortable making a decision about moving the, the decision before us, just so we're clear, is, one, I think you raised some good points that you should get back with our, you know, building inspector to really nail down.
Yeah, there are more details required under the code for me to provide.
Right.
I'd like to get the ball rolling before.
We, we understand the ball-rolling concept, we totally get that. I just wanna really kind of sum this up of where we are, but the decision before us is whether or not to move this to public hearing. We have just received different information from you.
Sure.
And Jeff?
I don't think the decision is with you for, for a public hearing. I think the decision is whether you tell this applicant, yes, invest the time.
They can invest it, right.
Additional details we need to, to make a decision on moving this forward, so.
Yeah.
Probably if you got with the CEO in the next two weeks and the board can also fill you in now on what they would be interested in seeing, then in two weeks it can come back on the agenda as long as we're all understanding that you are, your doors are not gonna open until we know, know whether those variances are good.
And I, and I think we should, we wanna our attorney to talk with you about what is good.
Yeah, well, that, that'll be up to the board.
We would direct, we would.
Are you gonna direct your client?
Who is direct our attorney?
Sorry, yeah, yeah.
Do that.
Yeah, I mean, so that, your attorney's evening, I haven't, I told him we were having a meeting tonight, so I'll, I'll get back to him depending on what the board says.
Yes, any thoughts? Does that, does that sound like a plan?
I'm fine with that.
Does it sound realistic?
Yes, I do.
Okay, just, just so, wanna hear it from both.
I did have one comment. Mike, you referenced that it's really not a profitable enterprise without all the seating. And you kind of referenced if you don't get the permit, you have like seating option A and seating options desired. Really wouldn't necessarily have a backup on it. I mean, option A is don't do it. It's gotta be this to invest, to make it. Right, so, so here's the next thing, right? So are you willing to get to that and put the work in for half without knowing the outcome of the case? Or are you simply saying, I wanna move it forward and get the permit with a condition so at least I can go get the liquor license and start some of the other processes? That isn't necessarily the construction, but all the backend paperwork type stuff for the seat. I wanna think about it, uh, about what level, but we would make more investment, particularly in the liquor license moving forward and, and. You have some optionality, you have some things. Would, would there be major items maybe we wait on? I would need to assess, and it also does come down to what is, what is good, right? If it's every single appeal is exhausted and like, you know, we got, we gotta understand what that is. I mean, um, you know, we're, we're, we're committed to getting something done. I think there's a level of investment we'll make with, with that condition still. What that is exactly, I need to, I need to, I need to put it to that. We have sat down with Steve and gone through the floor plan, permitting plan and a lot of things. So they said there's, uh, details on what we put forth that we wanna talk through, happy to address those? Or, um, you know, we take, you know, what you, what you would like to see is, is a follow-up discussion.
So my understanding, though, is the concept of doing the internal space, right, and opening a bath before you even think about patio issues. When, if, and when that's approved, the patio thing would, would have to come to the board again, that would have to be approved separately.
Correct.
So you understand that?
Site plan, I think, a lot of us.
It's a site plan. It would have to, it wouldn't have to go to another.
Both?
Both, it would have to go to site plan, yes.
This is a change, it's a change in the site.
So the two pieces.
Yeah.
All right.
Our X two-year site plan is not changing from what Rachel's has. And so, um, we're not gonna be going to the planning and zoning board as a part of this process. Totally understand, we'll be getting that, we're walking before we run, if we can get the inside dialed in and then we'll be able to make a, a, an investment in, in the outdoor seating area.
So it's a two-phase plan, predicated on the fact that, that, uh, there was a favorable outcome on the court case for you.
Opening phase one is based on, yeah. Phase two is, there's a lot more to consider there, we're not gonna bite off what we can chew.
Yeah.
And, uh, we have enough to focus on inside before we put focus on the outside, but I hope we do, we do that, you know, once we're up and running and we can start to turn our attention to that and come back.
I gotta figure out where we are on the refuse. I'm not sure exactly, but I can do that and I, with attorney, I'll be talking to your attorney. I can do that while everything else is developed.
Right, because that was a question for us, yeah, we talked about what can happen with the refuse, so, that's still lingering.
I don't think it's a problem, so.
Impression, okay.
That, that issue.
Okay.
Because it wasn't directly involved in the lawsuit.
It was, uh, because of the handicap parking shared space, which is in the part of the D that also had the garbage and the water. But.
It wasn't the right.
We had thirty years of history putting garbage there and thirty years of history of them using water from our side.
So that's part of sorting things out over the next couple of weeks before, before it comes back to the board. We can direct Jeff, the board is in agreement, you know, to follow up on this, um, all the key factors. And also with Steve. And I, and also, I do think, you know, Justin raised some, some good points, you know, like, kinda drilled down a little bit on this plan. So, um, I think the board members should also submit, you know, their thoughts to Steve, to, you know, Steve, please take a look at this. So, you know, just so we all make sure we're all on the same page.
Okay.
Going forward, if we're gonna be bringing it right back to the next meeting.
Okay.
Okay.
So, um, the code does have a list of things you need to address as a part of the permit, which we have, kind of ready to go. So we'll submit that in advance to the next meeting. You speak with our attorney and we'll figure out what conditions would be under the permit that would be, um, a CO would be predicated on. And then we'll have a more fruitful discussion at the next meeting, too.
I would look at the statute and see what materials are required to be part of the application. Make sure, make sure you hit all those.
Yeah, they're, they're in there, it's in the works, I think.
I think there are two pieces, there's, there's a list of application materials and then there's a list of considerations for this. Yep, so take a look at the law.
Yep.
Okay. Oh, I thought you were discussing, okay.
I just have one question.
One more?
Here was the end of litigation, right, or the outcome of the case, right? There's the outcome of the first case and then there's subject to appeal and then there's the outcome of the appeal. Personally, I would want it to be appealed to inspire before I would be confident, right? But I think, is that a conversation with attorney-client privilege? Is that something we just talked about here?
Either or.
Okay, so let me.
I mean, there's no, there's no, no problem with, with us talking because that's what we're talking about, right?
Yeah.
It define, when we define what final is, that's the issue.
So I.
How many appeals can it be?
The reason why I'm asking is we don't want you to go do a whole bunch of work. If the majority of us right here say we want it to be at the end of the appeal, right? Or the absence of an appeal. And that's the challenge, right?
Bear in mind that if you are not successful in the litigation either side, without a notice of appeal, you have six months to perfect it. And then it will be, once you perfect it, the argument is probably two months away. And then probably the decision is only two months away, so we're talking about 10 months per year for the appeal.
I'm not moving forward if, if we're going to, if we're probably going to wait until all the appeals, I mean, that's, that's.
Well, it's part of the rescue ticket.
Yeah, yeah.
Right.
And that, that may be something that you all want to meet with me and talk about.
We'll talk about. So as an alternative, should we get a very, a new variance for a parking for this use? And then we can use that variance until such time as the other variance is through the court. And then we, and, and because we're not going to build a patio until that court case for sure is resolved, so.
So I don't represent that board.
I understand, I understand.
But you are really in a real catch 22. Because right now, on their record, they have a no parking variance.
And I think their position is, why are you coming back for variance? You already have a no parking variance.
Right, exactly.
That's valid and binding, even though there's litigation.
And, and.
Yes.
And the answer, the answer is because this board is not thrilled with granting a special permit, which relies upon variances which are subject to litigation. And, but that's not a good reason for them. That's the reason that you're, you're a problem.
And also they're, they're an independent board, making a decision from our board.
A problem?
No, no, I said that's why you're in a problem.
In a problem.
No, no, no.
You're not a problem.
No, no. You're in a problem, and I'm, I'm not speaking clearly enough, you are in a problem.
Yes. I do want to express this though, right? Absent of that prior parking variance being granted, the property had use, right? Had value to tenants under the prior code, under the prior parking ordinances, right? That what you're looking to do is different. And the reason why government takes time is because they want to give everybody the opportunity to look at how it's changing, how we're deviating from the laws that are in place, to make sure that if we move that forward, we do it thoughtfully. And the court is there to make sure, regardless of how much time it may take, my apologies for that. But the court is there to make sure that everybody has been able to voice their grievances, right? And appeal those grievances should you initially win. What we're not doing here is taking away, taking away your ability as a property owner to bring forward a tenant under all the conditions that already exist for everybody else. What you're looking to do is something different that happens to have been by a current other property owner challenged. And it has an appeal process. That's what the courts are there for, just because it's taking time. Sure, it may mean this doesn't work. It doesn't mean you don't have opportunity, just like every other property owner. So I want to be careful that we don't phrase this in a way where like we're taking something away. You have all the rights to you that are embedded in the code to every other property owner we have right now. What you're looking to do is different, unique, and it might be pretty cool. I'm not suggesting I'm not against it at all. It's just the court is there to make sure that people can air their grievances and appeal those grievances. So if it takes time and it means this doesn't work now, so be it. That's the tough part, right? That's the tough part about this.
I mean, we are, we had a tenant for the past five or six years that did not succeed in that space as curbed and configured.
Right, during COVID.
Which is during COVID, which is, we're here as property owners to do something and there are no other tenants that will come and step in this position. That's why I'm here asking for the permit.
And I don't want to interfere with that and I'm not suggesting that we don't try to move it forward. It's just the way the law works is to make sure people can air those grievances. And as a municipality, we don't want to assume the risk when we're still subject to appeal. That's my position on why I would want to wait till after.
Okay, so with that being said, so the action item, you know, we just talked about really how we are going to move forward to bring it back to the next meeting, getting more information to Steve and also with board members asking, you know, whatever things that they feel are to make. And also having our attorney chase down the rest of it.
The details.
Yeah, the, the details, as they say. Okay? It's not, it's not a no.
Yeah, no, this is progress.
Yeah, no, we, we want to work with you.
Yeah, I, I appreciate that. So, you know, I, I think you all know, it's, it's been a long process for us and we didn't really want it to happen this way, but here we are. So I really appreciate you're being constructive and I'd love feedback as we go through the process and, you know, working with you up has been, has been good to get, get a lot of this sorted out, so.
Yeah, thanks, Mike.
Yeah.
Thanks so much.
Thank you.
All right.
Mike just replied to you as well, just a quick question to Jeff. When this is all over, right? The consideration of the zoning districts is something that we can take up. But we wouldn't want to do it in the middle of this process.
I don't know why not, I mean, I'll think about it.
Okay.
Think about it because.
Specifically what I'm thinking about is the expansion of the TDD, which is the traditional downtown development district, right? Which has no parking requirements associated with it.
In fact, there's an application of, a request of the planning board to do that. It's still in existence still.
Yep.
Which is, this board has never dealt with.
Right, it was a memorandum to our board.
I don't think we're adjacent to that district, so it wouldn't need to be, and I just can't spot it. So, but like, you would, you would need to be a much.
Right.
Your request is across the street as well.
Right.
Your request is.
Yeah, to expand it.
There, there are some lots in the village that are not adjacent to residential districts that are fully enclosed.
Yep.
That could be considered as part of a broader TDD consideration. And I, and again, it's this idea of did this suggest we do that? That you don't want to make? You know, I'm not trying to, I'm just trying to ask, when can we take that up? And I don't know how it relates.
So regardless of this case, that's a broader discussion and I think of an appropriate one for the board. And that's something that, as you said, you want to think about, you know, when we would.
I, I came to talk about the Tabernacle Lake District, as you recall, yeah. And, and got very familiar with the village code more so than I ever thought I would, but yeah. I mean, there's constructive ways we can rethink getting the same result, like let's.
Now, it's a little harder for me personally, but the idea of the TDD operating as a restaurant on that, it's a little.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you so much.
Good night.
Appreciate it. Okay, next up, the South End Wood Street Bond update, please.
Just really quick, just got a little bogged down with the holidays and further back down in our pond attorney. Some details are needed from GPI. They've gotten, I'm saying we're at 95%, so we'll definitely have it for the next.
So they're working on it, just.
Yeah, we just want to make sure the resolution, right? The recent thing was on the pavement, what type of material? So it really drills down in that pond, so we want to make it right.
Okay, so we, we potentially could have something for the next meeting?
Yeah, as soon as I get the resolution itself up forward to the board, so you can take a look at it and see if anything pops for you. But I told them I really need it for the next meeting.
Okay.
I think we're still beyond timetable fine, so I think we're okay.
Okay, all right.
Okay.
Thanks for the update.
No problem.
Okay, next up, DPW bathroom project update.
I test materials that were sent, I believe, from Scott Carter to the board. I think this came in after we put it on the agenda. I think it was just that we were waiting on estimates and so, you know, Scott's not even here. So I think really we're still.
Well, I haven't had, I mean, I haven't had a ton of cases, we'll get everything, I mean, we all just received this. Should we try to get Scott to the next meeting on this?
That would be my recommendation.
And really try to circle back on, on a few things.
Can, can I just ask a question since we're on this? I, I think at the last meeting or a recent meeting, it was mentioned that some options might be off the table because the Canal Corporation was not enthusiastic about expanding out to their land. Is there any clarification on that?
Yeah, and Jeff and I had a brief conversation about that and I, I, Scott responded before we had a chance to speak with him. There's still really are opportunities to work with Canal Corporation. I think what they were really saying is that it's a lengthier process. We could go right for a permit, you know, just the way we did a permit for this. And I think that was indicated in the correspondence from them, where we would encroach on the two feet, but it'll be only under a permit concurrently with that. And Jeff, you can correct me on this, my understanding could be, you could then initiate that process concurrently with a permit to acquire the two feet of land. And I think really what the, the contact at Canal Corp was saying, that's just simply a longer process. It's, it's doable, but it's a longer process. It wasn't that they were negating it as much as, you know, if you want to build it, you can do it this way. Or you can go ahead and get the permit and build it, we can permit you for that and then go for the acquisition.
We've built improvements on the canal land.
Yeah.
With only a permit that's revocable on 30 days, notice.
Yeah, for everything, for anything along the canal. Yeah.
Well, what are some of the other ones, some of the other things that we've built in that situation?
The pavilions.
What?
Pavilions.
Yeah, the pavilion.
Doesn't it have two projects down there? Two projects down there? Yeah, two pavilions, yeah.
And then are those still unpermitted land or do we acquire that? So it's still unpermitted?
No, it's all, it's only under permit, that's what we're saying. In other words, we, we have precedent of doing this.
We've never had problems with it.
No, what are they going to do? Grab a pavilion and do what? You know, in other words.
Or tell, say that it can't use their land and take it down.
Potentially, but I mean, it's, they know it's not in their best interest to do that. I mean, you know, there's, and there really has not been a precedent that I know of. I mean, I've spoken with other canal communities, you know, because, because it's so, it's the ownership of things along the canal. It's all so quirky, you know, it's, it's Canal Corp, it's private, it's some, a little bit of our, you know, it's just quirky.
And they want to activate it.
Yeah, they do, they want to activate it.
They don't want to. They may not consider this to be an activation because.
But they, but also in, in early, very early discussions and Scott Haregley was part of this as well, they recognized that the DPW facility had been there for 60 years, you know, for decades. And they, you know, they see that as part of parcel of directly abutting their land. And they asked, to the extent that they recognized that they could not activate the land up against your building for the canal. They could see something along the canal like docks, you know, we've talked about that. But they, they have indicated in several conversations that they wouldn't do anything to activate that land because it's adjacent to a major facility for our village.
So are we saying that any questions about this, we have to wait?
No, I mean, I would think let's, let's, I mean, I haven't really had a chance to look at it, but let's, maybe we can get our questions to Scott. I do want to circle back on what it would look like to maybe go through that process if we want the two feet of land. I mean, that was never pursued, it was just, we got the letter back. And then I think Scott sort of ran with it in this direction, but I think we can, we can look at everything. And I think it's an opportunity for us really. And then just bring it right back to the next meeting. And I'd like to have Scott with us here too, because, you know, that way we can really chase this down properly with Scott.
In the meantime, could we have that, if there's a letter about the land use, could we have that letter?
Yeah, I think Scott sent it out to everybody.
I'm not sure if I got the letter from the Canal Corp.
Oh, you know what, then I'll, I'll, I'll circle back with him. I thought he, I thought he just sent it to everybody. Yeah, no problem.
Was it in an email?
I think it was an email.
Was it an email?
It was an email that was to him that he forwarded.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It was just an email, it wasn't an actual.
Well, yeah, I should have given it a letter, I should have sent it.
Or a comment.
Well, I'll double check, I thought he sent it to everybody. Okay, yeah, for sure.
Thanks.
You got.
The, so my question on that was simply, yeah, on this information here that we just received from the design architects. Option one was the big elongated space and I don't think we're planning to build a $300,000 to $400,000 bathroom facility. Seems a lot.
Depends on how much you wanted to vote to.
Yeah, 400, that's a nice bathroom. But, but option two was this single bathroom, which is all on our space. I would like to see, again, going back to the idea of two bathrooms compliant with New York State Building Code and ADA or whatever was required, but I think by my reading of New York State Building Code last night and the prior day, you only need a certain number of compliant bathrooms. And I think it's one for so much space, but building code was interesting, right? It didn't actually need, nowhere in there were the items that I could find necessary to have it be compliant, but I think it's appropriate to have at least one compliant bathroom. But if we shrink it by the two feet, can we still find another bathroom that may not be perfect in terms of compliance? Maybe it's the smaller bathroom, right, the, the less convenient bathroom, but it's still a second bathroom that you can change in, take a shower and, right, use the facility. Anyway, so I'd still like to try to consider keeping it on our property if we can or to the extent that's necessary to look at the Canal Corp land, have that side-by-side two bathroom design versus the elongated one across the entire village space. So anyway, he had, Scott had mentioned he was going to send a note to somebody looking to that New York State Building Code to see if in fact you needed both of them to be compliant or just one.
I, I have a question for Dorothea, here in the village hall. Do you have one bathroom there?
We have one bathroom here and we have two bathrooms downstairs.
In the basement?
Yes, and they, and they're all ADA compliant.
And they're all ADA?
No.
The bathroom downstairs are?
Yeah, one bathroom is not ADA.
Oh, you're right, you're right.
In the basement?
One is substandard, one is compliant.
Yeah, but you're right.
And up here is ADA.
New versus old, that's the problem, you can't compare those.
Right, right, I get that, yeah, okay. And we have, there's no shower in that bathroom?
No.
Okay, and how much staff is here?
Well, it's not just staff, for the office, we have four, we can't, oh, six.
Six, six staff here, okay.
Yeah, but it's also, we have the American Legion.
Right, and then downstairs we have that.
And the U.S. and the public.
Yeah, okay.
And that was, those were in place long before I even.
I think it would be nice to have two showers. I think that'll work, help, be helpful for you guys, right, versus just one?
Yeah.
Two is all over the world, but yeah.
But push came to shove, just one full facility with a shower would be nice. If push came to shove.
Well, at this point, I think you said to me, anything.
Anything.
Anything at this, anything, I mean, that's really where the crew is, where you are. Absolutely anything is better than one single toilet behind a door in a kitchen.
And I think we're all agreed.
I think we're all agreed, we just have to get to it.
We just had to figure out what.
So Scott's going to come and help, get some answers, we're going to keep you this.
So I think that's the action.
We're going to get some information from Canal Corp, see if we do anything on it.
Yeah, I, I think it's worth, worth the fall.
Okay.
Okay, okay, next up, the short-term rental update. I mean, Alexandria just reached.
Alexandria reached out to the committee to get a timeline and their anticipated completion date. We have not received that information yet, so hopefully by next meeting we'll have that.
But you know, I think, knowing you're on this by the board, you know, because I know you're anxious to kind of get going on something, why don't we have Alexandria circle back and say that throwing this out, so for discussion, that the board would like to have the final report to close things out by the next meeting, given the next couple of weeks? Because they already did a lot of the research and gave us the annual report. That way we're respecting their work, we understand they don't have all the time in the world either. But we know, we, we kind of want to close that piece out and then bring it back to our board. Well, kind of go with that.
February 13th, we have some budget meetings between, but could we say it's two weeks too fast?
I don't, I don't know that it would be, I mean, they probably don't.
What are they doing now? I don't think they're doing anything.
You know, they can tell us it's too fast, but let's.
Let's ask for it on February 6th.
Let's ask for it on February sixth, and then let's put a conversation amongst us on the board meeting agenda for February thirteenth.
Yep, I think that's the way we're going with that.
So does that mean that we're not gonna discuss anything about short-term rental until the next board meeting?
The thirteenth, that's right. We would receive it on the sixth, right?
Yep.
And then the thirteenth. If they...
File a report or whatever.
Yeah, if they requested an opportunity to come in again, we can certainly entertain it on the thirteenth in advance, but it'd be nice in advance of our discussion, but I think we still should start our discussions on the thirteenth.
So just set... So we just be sent out to the board by the sixth?
Oh, by the sixth, okay.
I think that's all, yeah, it's not about another meeting. It's just simply, we need time to receive the information, process the information.
And then we can discuss it on there, okay.
You with me? Okay.
And we do have a budget meeting on the sixth.
Okay.
And I'm taking a seminar on the twenty.
Oh, you are?
That's awesome.
Where?
Online.
Where? Online?
Yeah.
What's it, what is it? Yeah, I think, what's it called? What is it, title?
I don't know. I just get these lists, these flyers and that.
I would, I would like to...
It's two, three hundred and some bucks.
Do you submit to?
Sure.
Please?
You know, who would ask?
Yeah.
What?
We've got four of them, we watch together.
Only two of us though.
Right. You can publicly notice that.
Ah, there we go.
Oh, there you go. We can all watch it together, even in public.
And also, we're not deliberating on anything.
That's true. Yeah, I will wait to see that, Jeff, please. Thank you.
Yes, Lily.
May I have a clarification on the short-term rental agenda item for the next meeting? To be more specific, instead of just general short-term rental, could we talk about a timeline? Could we specify what our timeline would be, what that looks like, what our goal would be for setting a public hearing?
Well, hang on.
Okay.
Hang on.
Okay.
We're gonna receive the final report from the committee.
On the sixth.
With their recommendations. And then I think really the discussion we would have is, based on the recommendations or other thoughts that maybe we have in addition, do we want to look at, is it worth looking at legislation or not? You know, as a board, how do we want to proceed? I don't know. I want to see their final. I do, I just think they're an ad hoc committee, they're citizens, they put in their time. I just want to be able to sit down and go over and look at their final recommendations.
So you're saying, we need to answer the question, should we or not at all?
In other words, is it a problem that requires a legislative action in our community? I mean, I've got a couple of thoughts already on it, but I just want to prepare mine and see their final report. And then we can set up, if we do want to move forward in some fashion with legislation or something, then we can set up timeline, let's take a look at this and what does this mean.
Would, would the consideration be that, when you say legislation, the legislation may be that we're not, we're not dealing with short-term rentals, that we're having a rental, a rental registry? I mean, public, when I say public hearing, that doesn't preclude that we're gonna come up with legislation dealing with short-term rentals. It means that...
Well, the registry can be something even completely different than short-term rentals.
But it's still, it would still involve a public hearing.
Oh, yeah, oh, I thought you were talking only about short-term rentals. The register, I mean, I...
We already...
Whatever we decide to do.
I'm being stupid, we're gonna...
Yeah, I thought we were looking at it.
We're gonna on a standard rental registry.
Yeah, no matter what.
We have inspections for everybody.
Even if we never have a shred of short-term rental legislation.
Exactly.
Just, you know, to me, that is a standalone.
Yeah.
We, no matter what, I think we all thought about, we really kind of need that, I think that'd be a good thing. And that was the direction Steve.
Okay, but I, my hope would be that we would be able to establish that ahead of the end of the moratorium.
We can do that at any point in time, right?
When your attorney drafts the legislation.
Pardon me?
When your attorney drafts the legislation.
Okay.
I'll have a talk with that attorney.
Okay, that'd be good.
I'm just, I'm just asking if we could be a little bit more specific so that our discussions can become more focused. I guess that's the way...
So how do, why don't we, I hear where you're going with this. Why don't we say then for the, for the meeting on the thirteenth, that we will look at the report that we received, the final report from the short-term rental committee, and then the other agenda item will be to review the short-term rental registry and what Steve has come up with and our firm, or what? What are you, what are you thinking?
Not a short-term rental.
I mean, that's what I meant to say.
That's what I'm saying.
Right, thank you. I'm not over my skis.
Short-term rental.
Like what?
Rental.
Yeah, the rental registry. Okay, so in my mind, the two separate items that we should look at.
I'm anticipating you're looking at short-term rental report review for the board and discussion. And then a rental registry.
Discussion, okay. Yeah, but Steve's been doing some research, and Jeff can weigh in as well.
I wouldn't mind having in there too, an opportunity for us to brainstorm from the feedback from the, the short-term rental committee, right? An opportunity for us to brainstorm what we think our position individually or collectively may be, and whether or not we need to move forward with legislation, and then sort of set the table for that. If it's needed, can we do it in a meeting format? Our normal meeting can be done in workshop first and working through. I think in this case workshops.
It's like a community thing.
Right, and so, but what, I kind of like the idea of the thirteenth, being able to, as a board member, offer my sort of position statement.
Sure.
Yeah, because it's part of the discussion.
Right.
Yeah, part of the discussion.
And then we can all kind of...
There's a majority, there's a minority.
There might be things we agree on and don't agree on. There's things to throw out there. And if we just each broadly have a position statement, if we want to, we don't have to, but then we can bring it into workshops after, there's a better understanding of where we all sit on this subject. And again, I don't think anybody has to, but I think I might like to take that time.
Yeah, I think you're raising good points.
Okay.
And I think I'm gonna prepare one too, Dave.
Okay, yep.
I think Dorothy and I should come up with, when is the moratorium, and work backwards from that.
Thank you.
To tell you when you must have, if you want to do something, a short-term rental, what the timeline is for the short-term rental.
Boy, this is a big year for timelines.
Yeah, I love timelines.
Well, this is a good year for you, isn't it?
It must be energetic.
Okay, so the national item would be, uh, short-term timeline for the short-term rental. Okay.
And just to be clear, I thought my direction from the last meeting was that we were charged with establishing legislation for the rental registry.
Yes, right, but it isn't on this, I mean, we need to put it on the next...
You know, I want to be clear that that's what we...
I just don't want to confuse with the short-term rental.
Did I put in an agenda item?
Do, that way it's incredibly clear. Okay, all good on that, moving forward. Discussion on the refuse district.
Yeah.
Okay. Yes, ma'am.
He's been waiting patiently, he's very, he's like, yay! Okay.
He just knows.
Refuge district, okay, so...
Well, we brought it up last week, let me, let me dive in. We brought it up last week, you weren't able to join us for the meeting, and I know you had some, some feelings about it, and I did as well. And I know you've received some input, I think, from residents.
I do have correspondence from residents that I did pass on to the board earlier in the date, and when the board's ready, I will read it in the records.
Okay, okay. So I just thought, and I guess Lisa, you wanted, I mean, I'd already put it back on the agenda and you wanted it on too. I mean, it's, it's something that has been expressed in terms of, you know, a number of residents being interested, even when we put out a quick mini survey, the majority of the residents were in favor of a refuse district. I'm in favor of it, and I've made my opinion clear on that, and it's six pages of legislation that our very capable attorney has drafted and working also along with staff to figure out the administrative components. And I think at this point, it's an opportunity for us to save our residents some money and save, save a little wear and tear on our infrastructure and our roads. Any, any other thoughts, Lisa?
So, Dorothea, I had mentioned that I was interested to find out if you could maybe pull something together.
It's really hard to do. The board time is the board time.
Because we were concerned, there was a concern about whether moving forward with this refuse district is gonna take time away from the board to work on other things that the board is finding very important, like long-term capital planning, obviously the budget coming up, short-term rental. So there are some other things that, you know, that we really need to pay attention to. So my concern or my interest was, there's so much done already with the refuse district, you know, the legislation's kind of done, drafted, how much time really do we need as a board to move this forward? It doesn't seem like there's that much on our end. I mean, it's more on your administration on...
Right, I can't quantify what it's gonna take on my end.
Right.
To be honest, I tried thinking about it.
And I was just trying to say, if you knew how much it took on our end.
I have no idea because I am...
Oh, she's more interested what it would take on our end, not yours.
Oh, your end? Your time, your...
My time is good, my time. I'm here to watch your fight, so, but for you guys, you have a couple of public hearings.
Yeah, right, because you have the board meetings, which we're already here.
You're already here. So, I mean, again, I'm not trying to diminish your time, but you need to review the legislation, you would review the assessments that are provided, you would make the determination on the percentage of the surcharge for the district, with setting up the refuse fund, that fund you would have to adopt the budget for, that would go right hand-in-hand with the adoption of the general fund and the sewer funds. So, you know, it's...
It's basically in tandem with all the other actions that the board would be taking?
Yeah, it's all in tandem. Can I give you an estimate of your time? No, but you, do you have to prep a little bit for that? Yeah, I would say you do. It would be two public hearings and the setting of them, unless I'm missing something. Anything, Jeff, that we're missing?
No, I mean, you have to...
What we do.
You gotta read the, I mean, you gotta digest, read and sign if you like, the way the local law is written.
It's six pages.
It's big.
I think there's also a thought, and I know that Lily has also expressed this, that I would like to make sure that the public does have input in, alongside the two required meetings. I would like to, we talked about having like a lunch and learn, or have opportunities for the residents to come in. It doesn't have to be the board here. It can be, right? It could be somebody like Jeff and Dorothea, or whatever, or mayor.
It could be one board member or the mayor.
Just so the residents can be heard, right? So they have an opportunity to ask questions, they can be heard, because I think that that's really important.
And you know what else we could do? I'm thinking about that, maybe we could even get somebody from the town that, because they've had this experience of setting up the districts?
I think that's gonna confuse them.
Oh, well, you're right, because then they'll think it's, yeah, let's just do it in our own.
I just want to give them an opportunity to hear, ask questions, and voice concerns.
Sure.
And I believe there is time within the schedule to do that. That's not a meeting, that's not a set meeting list, all of you are gonna be present, and we could call a special meeting if you wanted to meet with the public. But outside of that, you know, the hall's here. We can open up on a Saturday, we can do it on a evening, you know, and...
Yeah, because you have all the information anyway.
Yeah.
Yeah, Lily.
Thank you for considering my consideration, which I, I thought was the most important component of this whole proposal of the refuse district. And that is, when we were talking about the, our G and E being replaced by Juul, that whole process that we discussed, we had a number of meetings where they came and talked to the public, explained exactly how much of the savings are we discussing, what are the, what are the requirements we're going to be? In other words, you don't have free choice anymore, you will be under, under one refuse collector. All of these questions that, that the constituents can come and ask and have the information so they know the right questions to ask when they come to the public hearing. I would really appreciate that, and I appreciate your offer, your time, because I think we don't necessarily have those answers. You would have the answers, and you're talking about assessments and how much it might cost.
Right.
So if you could kindly set that up and tell the board when those meetings would be, and perhaps we could have them also videotaped, so that if people can't be here in person, they can go circle back and look at it.
Yeah.
So we can make tutorials on a refuse district in the village, what that entails, what kind of savings we would be looking at, and the changes to their...
The savings, I can't quantify until we get the bids in. That's gonna be...
And what we can do though is share empirical evidence from research about what other communities have saved their household, and I think that would be a fair way to proceed.
Yeah, and that's where I was gonna go. We could use what we do know. And that's kind of the information we did send out from the flyers when we did the surveys, we can reiterate that, we can go through the process. Obviously, the staff and I can go through the process with anybody coming in and explain what the board is doing. I do believe though, having a public outreach meeting would be important, and I think that's one of the things we were trying to establish along with this, and it kind of got tabled back because everybody's...
Yeah, we had already talked about that.
Yes, but as long as, you know, it could be even just two trustees represented.
Yeah, absolutely.
I mean, we're all...
Absolutely, I agree. Anything we can do is more than nothing. And honestly, I think it's important to do that. The more outreach, the more outreach to do that, because it is gonna be an assessment, it is gonna show up on their tax bill, and they are gonna come into the office and they are gonna ask me that question. Any of those questions we can happen before that moment they open that tax bill is...
It's a change. It's a change. Straight up, it's a change, no matter what, even if it's a positive change or whatever, it's just still a change. Okay, so why don't, why don't we get with the staff and start putting that together?
Yeah, we can put that together.
And getting something to notify the residents, you know.
Yeah, absolutely, we can do that. But I think to stick to the timeline that me and Jeff proposed, we kind of need to move the...
You can turn it around quickly. You have pretty much all the information.
And I think we need, well, I can get that turned around quickly, but we still need this set.
We should, we should set it up. We should set it up to get them to come around.
Am I right, Jeff, or do we have a... I don't think they have much...
We don't have much wiggle, do we?
We have no wiggle. Well...
A little.
A little, but not much.
I'd rather say that for me.
So why don't you come up, yeah, come up with a couple dates, what's the next date?
We have on our timeline, we'll be, this public hearing, no.
Wait, say that again.
What would the date be?
For the public hearing?
Yeah.
It'd be...
February 13th.
February 13th.
So you could...
We could do...
Yeah, we could do it.
I'd have to check the village calendar for the meetings. I can float dates to the board tomorrow. It's kind of hard to do them online.
Wait, 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 we're floating dates for the public hearing?
No.
For just the lunch and learn?
There's nothing to...
Okay, so I don't really think that you need to ask us. I think that you'd...
Well, if you wanted to participate.
Right, but just set it. And whoever can go goes.
Just set, because this is more important that you guys are...
Right, that you and Jeff are there more so than us. I mean, if we can make it...
You're having a village attorney there. I'm giving advice to the public.
Yeah, I don't know that...
No, you don't.
It would necessarily...
I'm just thinking of the things that they may ask that maybe...
Unless you tell me and want me to give advice to the public.
No, I'm thinking more there may be questions regarding the reason why commercial is not included.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking too.
That's a policy decision.
Yeah, just policy procedural sort of...
It's a board policy decision.
Administrative, how does this really work?
Let me just propose this. Since obviously Jeff's time, very offensive, and, you know, not that I love having him, not having him around, but if anything popped up from a meeting, I could always tell the resident I'd like to call our attorney.
Okay.
And then send the answer to... I could get back to people.
That's fair.
I think that would be more warming to the public than...
Yeah.
Okay, so we have...
That's a better use of your time.
Better use of time.
Warming to the public.
Yes, Justin.
Yeah, so it seems that we're moving forward on setting public meetings here just based on an informal discussion. And I would suggest that this does seem a little bit of a departure from our past meeting where we talked about the refuse districts, raised a lot of issues about the time pressure that the board is under, especially with regard to the multi-year capital plan that we'd like to adopt, the budget, short-term rental laws. There are a lot of things going on. So right now, we're kind of, there's been an email since then where the mayor stated her position to the public. And I think that, you know, while that's well within her right to do, I think that the board...
Just what people do on Facebook.
Sure, sure. And I think that, you know, we're, I guess, all allowed to use the village to express our own opinions. I still want to make sure that we're on the same page about the direction that we're pursuing here. So I would suggest that if we are on the same page with going ahead with this and we're setting up public outreach meetings, that we do so with the board motion so that we know where we all stand.
Okay.
And I guess I would not really, I've already stated my position at the prior meeting, so I won't go back and just refer people to that.
So you just want to bring it to a vote to see, and the, or the...
Go ahead with...
Right, to have...
Public information?
To have a public information meeting set by Dorothea with whoever can show up to give the public a chance to express concerns and comments and ask questions. Is that what we're saying?
For me, I think it's the question whether or not it's going to go to a public hearing. And then if it is going to go to a public hearing, are you going to know an outreach program, you know, outreach?
Okay, so you're saying that we need to make a motion whether the board wants to bring this to a public hearing? That's what the motion's going to be?
I think that's the right motion to figure out what's going to follow from that.
And so we can have a public hearing and not take any action. We can table something and defer it. Am I correct?
Yeah, we can defer it, but again, remember, the timeline is pretty stretched here.
Understood.
Yeah.
Understood.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm just...
Yeah, that's certainly an option.
Yeah.
So just because we have a public hearing doesn't mean that we are pressed to pass any kind of legislation on this?
Only if we want, only if we want to be able to set up the district to administer the district in the next cycle of the tax bills.
Yes.
So the residents can benefit from the lower costs.
Right.
Because then it goes out to, you know, there's other things that kick in. In fact, that's what happens.
But I'm saying that even if we do have a public hearing, a meeting...
Public hearing.
Hearing. And we decide not to do it in May, we could always do it next.
You can bring back the local law anytime if you don't...
So it's not setting us, it's not setting us up so that we have to move forward?
Correct. It's just a public hearing.
No, no, it never does.
You don't, I mean, just because you send something to a public hearing, it doesn't...
Okay.
Let me think here.
All right, so I make a motion?
Do we want to hear the poll comment?
Oh, yeah, sure. Thank you.
Okay, I received from Rachel August. Unfortunately, she didn't provide an address. I say we should go ahead with the refuse district and implement it in this year, not wait another year. Thank you. And that's Rachel Baker, I'm sorry. I was going to say Baker. There's two names on my chart, so confusion. Okay, the next one is from Ben Richards residing at 55 Monroe Ave. I would like to iterate my support for the most expedient implementation of the village refuse district. It could save villagers approximately 40% on their trash and recycling. This is a substantial amount of savings for working-class families in our community. In addition, thresholders are now obligated to provide better services, which benefits everyone. If a holler doesn't do their job, then they don't get their contract renewed. The refuse district is a win for every household in the village. I am disappointed that progress has been stemming here. The village board has been elected to make the village consider it better for every resident. A refuse district is an easy solution to make happen. Please do not let government infighting, political brinksmanship, or bureaucratic inaction stand in the way of making this village the best it can be. Thank you for your time. And...
Sorry, comment number one.
There is participants online tonight. Would anybody like to speak or send a Q and A? Question? I'd say all four.
You say what?
They're all four.
Okay, so can I make a comment? Because I did get some private correspondence from Cara Fleishman. Cara was not in favor of a refuse district. I also got some comments on a Facebook post explaining that we are going to talk about this tonight. Please, for your concern. Robert Corby wanted to know if there was any draft legislation on this and he'd like to see, and slimmed in that would be in the...
Yep, it's from the last...
And also Linda Brusby also wanted to have more information and more public input.
So that was something we'd be addressing, and so that's helpful. Okay, Lily, yeah.
There was a statement made, 40% savings. Was that stated anywhere? Is that based on...
I think it's based on what the town has reported.
Okay.
And so he may have been in touch with somebody at the town.
We have never come home to that.
Or maybe there's only search nationwide.
Yeah.
I don't know where you got that number.
That's one of the specific questions that I have been unable to answer.
Sure, I'm sorry, Jeff.
My understanding is it was based on what the town experienced in our individual districts.
Yeah, but I think that's what was in the aperture.
Yeah, I'm sure.
Okay, so any comments are in? Okay. Do you think you want to make a motion?
Sure, I want to make a motion to move the refuse district public hearing forward so that we can put a date on the calendar for that, July the 2nd. Oh, do I have to put the date in there?
Yep.
To move forward for a date for...
February 13th.
February 13th at 6:00 p.m.
6:00 p.m.
July 2nd.
Roll call, trustee Marshall?
Nay.
Trustee Coe?
Yes.
Trustee Lanter?
Nay.
Trustee Lightfoot?
No.
Mayor Palmer?
The care is...
Motion fails.
But I will say, actually, I'm going to put my vote in. Yes, should have gone to public hearing. On the record.
So does that mean that that can't, that we're not able to bring that up again this year?
It means we bring it up when we have done. I haven't even read the code.
So I can make a motion next meeting? Try to get it up.
Good, or, so of all the things that we've been doing, or that I've been doing, that I've been working on, I haven't even read those six pages. You referenced that it's only six pages. Six pages of law.
With a lot of crosshairs.
Actually, probably where you're showing the edits.
So I want to make sure that I put the time into it. I've got public opinion coming to me that areas, I want to move forward. Personally, I support it. I want to get it done. I just have not had...
Understood, yeah, I know, and that's been brought up. We appreciate it, we really do. No, I mean, it's not that we don't understand what you're concerned about. Yep, we understand that, okay. Next up, the review of the proposed general and sewer reserves.
Talk about dreaming.
All right. I'm sorry.
Yeah, talk about that.
All right, you ready?
Okay.
Now, this is all good stuff.
It is, this is, I mean, this is good.
This is all good stuff.
This is the good stuff.
This is all time coming.
This has been since the moment I took office, and there was all those reserves that really needed to have language to repurpose the reserves so we can access those funds as needed. In addition, you know, other reserves that this board is interested in establishing as well. So I think this is really good work, and I'm very appreciative of everybody's time and effort on this.
And I have to thank for my contributions from taking my words and making them professional.
No, and also, you know, you reached out to the controller, you know, the guidelines and all that. So, you know, there's been a lot of moving parts on this.
There's a lot of follows we need to handle.
Yeah. Okay.
So how do we want to start this?
We could go reserve by reserve.
Yep.
Yeah? Should we start with the memo? And maybe...
Sure.
Maybe, Jeff, is there anything beyond what you've put in the memo that you would like to add that you hadn't had a chance to? Because I have some comments on the memo.
No.
No? You also want to jump in first?
No.
No, all right. So the, let's see. We need repair reserves for everything, is that right?
No. Only if you want them.
Only if we want them, and so let's talk about this.
You can have repair reserves.
We can have repair reserves. Can you do repairs and reserves from the general fund at any time you want it?
Wait a minute, can you do repairs from the general fund at any time you want? I assume as long as it's budgeted.
And as long as it's not for sewer, right?
Well, you can do it for the sewer.
Right, no, but he asked about the general fund, about any repair.
Yeah, as long as it's not sewer.
Yeah, so any given year, whatever we do here with reserves, in order to do the things that the reserves are created for, we don't have to get it in the reserve fund first. You can just do it out of the general.
You can do it out of the general if you have funds to do it.
If you have the funds to do it, that's right. Okay, so that's the first question. With regards to repair reserves, you had mentioned in one of them, it was the statement of recur annually or in shorter intervals.
Can't.
It can't.
Correct, correct, it can't. Can you extend that? Could it be biannual?
Well, yeah, you could do whatever you want. You can only not, you can't set up a repair reserve that has... anticipates expenditures for repairs that recur annually or less.
And could we make that annually biannually? Or, I'm sorry, every other year?
And what's the intention behind that? I just want to understand where the question's coming from.
Give me something you have to do every other year. General repair. Throw it at you. Is there something that you do every other year?
And maybe another corollary question is, is that how you would look at it? Like, do you look things at every other year? I mean, because I see where you're coming from.
What I'm trying to do is answer the question.
Let me just, the answer to the question is yes. You can say this repair reserve will be only used for repairs that recur annually or no less, that recur only at greater intervals than biannual.
You could do that, sure.
But I would point out, anytime you go to use a reserve, it's always going to be a board decision whether you use that reserve. So you're creating extra steps that, I mean, that could create a hardship.
Which in one respect is why I'm actually trying to extend the time a little bit so that way the more common repairs and reserves are just part of the budgeting process that you put in there.
They already are.
Right?
Yeah, they are.
I know, that's what I'm saying. But if we dump money in the reserve, and we have something we do every other year, every time you get the money out, you're going to have to go to vote.
Can I ask a question a different way? Because I see where you're going. Repairs that are just general repairs that are ongoing, those come out of what's budgeted?
Yes.
There's budget lines for that. It's not, it's not from a reserve.
Correct.
The repair reserve, its intent is, I'm just going to pick a piece of equipment. We have a major, the dump truck, okay? Something happens, it's a $30,000 repair. It's cheaper to repair than replace, but it's not in the budget. It would create a budget hardship. The point is then to reach out to the reserve to cover that repair. So that's what that reserve is for. It's not for every other year you have to change the brakes on something. It's not for that.
That's what you're saying. Yeah, but here's the thing. The way it's written right now, all of the repair reserves are annual or less. Anything more, less often than annual, the reserves could be used for. Meaning the brakes every other year, you're like, hey, let's hit the reserve for it.
Well, that would be a board decision, and that is not the intent because the other part of that language is, it's not annually, but it's the, something that could be covered within your budget.
Yes, plus. It's designed to exclude from reserve funds anything that will be budgeted for.
Correct.
Yes, though, if you don't budget for it and the reserve says you can take money out every other year for it, and it's a brake job every two years or something, then you could go hit...
I don't think that...
But that would be planned maintenance.
Yeah, yes, routine maintenance.
But there's nothing in the language that says planned maintenance or routine maintenance is excluded.
Should we, would it be...
Hold on, hold on.
I think it does.
By its very nature, planned maintenance is excluded. Because it's going to be budgeted.
Correct.
Does it have to be budgeted, though?
Yes.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, to do proper budgeting, it would have to be budgeted.
Or I would have to go back to you guys every time I needed to do some maintenance work. Because that's what the board... All I'm trying to get to is that I want the reserve language to have some teeth. And by having it be annual or shorter intervals, or saying it's going to be budgeted in the normal budget, it takes away the teeth of the reserve. So by having it instead of, say, recur annually or shorter intervals, right? And all this says is, hey, the purpose of the reserve...
Let me stop you there. That's a legal requirement that you can't set up a reserve for repairs that are going to recur annually or less. That's the only legal requirement for setting up a repair reserve fund. You don't have to use a repair reserve fund. You can rely on budgeting.
Oh, I'm going the other way, Jeff. I want, instead of it saying annually, I want it to say every three years or every five years.
I think you're making the reserve too hard.
Well, there's somewhere in between that I think is not annual, is what I'm trying to get at.
Okay, you're looking to make your reserves, and I think this is offensive, you're looking at making it too restrictive. You don't want it so restrictive that a situation happens that the board can't take the action it needs to use the funds for the taxpayers because it could be something totally anticipated. It might have been something that it rise because of the annual maintenance didn't happen or something, but now the amount is so huge. You want that, you want the funds, I want to say easily accessible, but accessible.
You want the funds available for that rainy day.
Yes, you do.
And that's...
And more, you should make people a job.
So you guys are both giving me good opinions. And what I'm suggesting is I want something different than annual. I would like it to be biannual or a little bit more, with a little more teeth.
I'm trying to understand how that serves us, defining, I'm trying to understand that.
Sure, so here's the thing, we're going to come down... Yeah, go ahead first.
Oh.
Yeah, okay. For example, last year, for a repair to a retaining wall on Els...
Yep.
The street's growing wider and wider, and last year it just so happened that, you know, it basically made the sidewalk too narrow to be able to machine through comfortably without bouncing off the tree or bouncing off a ledge. Unfortunately, we did bounce off one of those stone pillars and knocked it over. So it's an unforeseen project of having to repair this wall because of that.
But you can't say I need this, you know, two years out. I mean, it's...
No, I know that, I know that. What I'm saying, though, is I don't want money to go into this that you can use for the brake job that you need to do every two years.
It doesn't.
And Jeff, I recognize Jeff said, and I think others are saying that, you put it in the budget because that's routine repair. But if you come into a situation where you budget too low on your routine repair, and then you look in your reserves and it says, oh, brake job, that's done every other year, we can grab it.
So what are you going to do if you don't?
I believe the stopgap is the board for using a reserve respectfully. And I would say...
Well, both of them are either subject to a public hearing or...
There's a lot of steps involved in using a reserve, so it's a big...
So you think that by itself, and I guess I'll ask everybody else here, does everybody else feel that's enough?
Yeah, that really, I mean, that's Controller's guidelines, and that's.
For two municipalities, the use of a reserve, I've only seen like once. It's very rare, and it's usually a planned expense, like a building, a repair reserve. It was a huge.
That's why I didn't feel bad getting rid of this and brought this whole conversation up.
It's a huge thing to use it, and it's great when you have it. And I think the one time we used the repair, it was, you know, we had an asbestos being.
You're preaching to the choir here.
So I think, honestly, the reserves, it's a savings, it's really for that rainy day, for that unanticipated fund that could really be a budget breaker.
And just to follow up to that is, I'm not trying to take that away. What I'm trying to suggest is, I don't want this to be so easily invaded, because the language is too loose.
I don't think it is. I don't think it is easy.
Yeah, Justin.
Maybe just to take a slightly different angle on this, I think a lot of the language here is very good. So thank you to Jeff for working on this, and I appreciate the effort on getting these ideas for the reserves together. To me, you know, this is a mechanism for accumulating cash for different purposes, right? And the next item on the agenda is the multi-year capital plan. So I guess, you know, I don't have a specific suggestion about, you know, if these reserves are the right ones or not. I think that, or if the language is exactly right, I think we've got to kind of meld these two agenda items together, and talk about what we're saving for, and then kind of circle back a little bit. But I see what you're saying, you know, we don't want them too easily accessible, but I think what access we want is driven by what our goals are and what we're saving for specifically.
Well, and I think this gives us a framework to start with.
Oh, yeah.
Sure. You know, because I'm looking at every single reserve, and it's targeting the big stuff and the future potential needs of our village. I see reserves as, they're reserved, they're the rainy day, they're for the big stuff. The capital, the capital plan, the long-term planning, to me is a standalone. Reserves are reserves, they're out there in that side of our universe. Our longer-term planning is sort of, it's almost like a comp plan, you know, where you put together the financial sort of version of a comp plan that's a fluid document. You're constantly, you know, looking, is this really where we're going? You know, you reassess and you move forward every few years, just the way we would with a comp. So I see reserves as their own unique financial entity.
So I don't think anybody's said anything different than what I've said.
Well, you know, you're saying that the language is too loose.
I just want language that doesn't allow for brake jobs to be done and invaded by future boards that aren't so fiscally responsible as ours.
My understanding that it goes way beyond the board, there's other laws and plays that do protect it.
And guidelines.
All you have to do is have a public hearing, and I mean, seriously, these things would move forward.
But I think, A, if you ever did that, the public, I'd like to think, be upset. You're taking funds for minor things that should be budgetary.
We'd be dinged by the controller in a heartbeat.
Yeah, anybody.
We would totally be completely outside of Controller's guidelines.
Does anybody have a problem changing the word annual to biannual, and why?
Where?
On every repair reserve?
Yeah, because that means that, doesn't, if you change it to biannual, like I said, that accomplishes what you want.
I just don't know.
I still don't understand what the goal is.
I don't know how it serves us.
No, I'm not, no. I'm just trying to figure out why, if the money's there and you needed the money.
Biennial, not biannual.
I knew what you meant, I think we all did.
Thank you. So biannual.
Right.
Right?
I heard you say biannual.
Yeah, I think I might have said biannual once, but biannual.
Okay, Jeff, finish your thought.
I just, I don't understand what you're trying to accomplish, that if you have a reserve fund there, that the XYZ truck needs a ABC part, plus more than you've got in the budget, why you wouldn't want to be able to go to that reserve fund and use it?
Because that's not what I want to put money in reserves for. I want to put money in reserves for the brake wall fallen part, the dump truck fallen.
Well, that's, I mean.
That's exactly what we're talking, that's what.
What Jeff just referenced was.
Your fear.
I don't see, he's, that was the fear, he presented the fear. Hey, we don't have enough money in the repair line for the budget, and we need a part for the truck, let's go grab it.
So the board may notice.
Go ahead.
And that's correct, Jeff. I think what Jeff's saying, okay, the part is $30,000, or it's $30,000 to install a part. I think there is a limit to, you're not going to go to a reserve for a $1,000 repair. You're just not. And I think when you say annually, it means, whether it's biannually or whatever, it just means any repair that's going to show up. I don't think you have to expand it. It would be something that would normally be annually scheduled, or, you see where I'm going?
I do.
Do we kind of mean, when we say that the type of repairs must not recur annually or at shorter intervals? I mean, we're just saying it's not a regular repair.
It is not. That is the point, it is not a regular repair.
Okay, so then that's good, let's just use that language. Put that in there.
It's there.
No, it isn't. No, it isn't.
Because this is language I actually borrowed from.
That's okay. It's perfectly fine.
Where is it then?
So what I would suggest then, in the repair language, have it say that the monies in this reserve may not be used for repairs which recur annually or regular.
I think that's great.
Or at short intervals.
I would support that.
I'm going to bet.
I would support that 100%. I think that's.
I agree.
A little understanding where you want to go with it, I get it, I'm all in.
All right.
100%.
Can I add any other words to make everybody happy? Can I add any other words to make everybody happy?
Please do.
So that takes away my fears, the regular biannual.
Regular.
Right, so on all repair reserves, the tagline that says to recur annual or shorter intervals, say that recur regularly, annually, or at shorter intervals.
I'm right there.
I think that's great.
Yay.
Because also, it matches with the Controller's guidelines as well. And really what we're doing is reinforcing that.
Yeah.
So I think that's good.
Super happy.
Yep.
Okay.
And what's nice about it is any other board, you know, transports, can read and go, oh, we can't do a regular repair.
That's right.
I get it.
Put that in there.
Okay.
We all did. Just give me a while to figure out how to express it.
I think, okay, you're all trying to say.
No, but it's a good discussion, I mean, I think, you know, that's, because once these are in place, they're in place. So you really want to make sure you're dotting those and crossing the T's.
It's been a long time waiting for this language, and I think it's, I'm really grateful that we're working on this now, because for so long, we were, it was, these reserves were sitting there unidentified. We didn't even know what we could use them for.
For decades.
And I think we have to, we have to identify it so that we can, otherwise the controller is going to be on us, because you're thinking, why are you sitting on these reserves that are, that you're not using?
Correct. And that was part of. I think that's. I think it was part of her discussion, you know, when you did reach out to get this language, you know. It's part of, naturally, if it goes back to, it goes back to the audits we have with the Controller. And it's very important that we have it, right?
Yes. I'm very grateful for this language and ready to move it along.
Would you like to keep going with a couple?
And Justin.
All right. I've got a lot.
I know.
This is what I've. All right, so this is also in the memo, you reference a type capital reserve fund. I don't think any of the reserve language, did you create a capital reserve fund? So the question is, sorry?
I don't understand.
A type capital reserve, the very first bullet.
The very first bullet in your memo is a type capital reserve fund. The capital reserve fund is for the public, maybe created by resolution. Example would be to purchase land, buildings, building alterations.
Actually, there is a reserve.
Is there a capital reserve?
Type capital.
Yeah. Where is that in?
Yeah.
I see it maybe in this case.
A capital reserve, and Justin, correct me, would be the equipment and vehicle reserve, that's a capital asset. It would be.
You can figure it out.
It's a capital asset. So what's the definition of that, then? It would be what? What would it be?
The second, you can figure it out from the second, what? These all say now therefore be resolved, and then the next one says be a further resolve. In that next one, it will tell you what kind of fund it is.
This type reserve fund, this repair reserve fund. Okay, so then coming back to the memo, the examples that you had referenced, it was simply that we don't have a reserve created at that specific type. So for example, purchase land, buildings, or building alterations. I guess building alterations to a degree.
Yeah, there is one.
Right? If we were to say as a board, hey, let's put some money away to buy some land, right? Which maybe we do someday, perhaps from Canal Core, who knows? Right? Where do we put that in the reserve, in the different reserve buckets that you have created? Which one would receive that?
I don't think we have that.
For land?
For land.
Unless the one I'm thinking of.
So this goes back to Justin's point, which is connecting the multi-year capital plan with the language and.
I'm going to let Jeff check that, but I think that we worked on the reserves that we were also, right, started to work on. We had requested a building, or building reserve, and that was, holy no.
Yeah, that's like that was last year.
They felt that required more investigative.
If you wanted to do that.
Yep, I'm okay not doing it. It's just when I read that particular bullet, I thought I was going to see some reserve that allowed us to buy land.
No.
No, and if you wanted one, you would add that language to the last two reserves, which are building replacement, improvement, and operation, your fund, you would say land acquisition as well.
I mean, you could put it in there, even if you've never used it, just so there is some coverage, there was an opportunity.
Right, that's true.
You know, I don't think it's a negative thing, I mean, I'm glad you brought that up.
Yeah, that would go under the sewer building repair reserve fund, or no?
No, the building replacement improvement.
Oh, yeah, building replacement.
What if you had building replacement improvement?
Land acquisition.
Alteration and real estate acquisition reserve fund?
Yes, sure.
So real estate would be land as well?
Sure.
Or property acquisition.
Property, let's say property.
Or do we want that to be a standalone? I think it's okay to embed it in this, anybody else?
Yeah, it can be embedded. We may or may not.
You may or may not.
You know, I put it there.
Here's what I'm thinking of, right? This is the big picture stuff.
Then we're going to hear from Zach.
Yeah, this is the 10-year plan, so, let's say somehow magically, there's a piece of land that makes sense for us to acquire. Maybe it's not in the village, but it's where the DPW could go, so we can do something with the property in front of the arboretum. Great. For the next eight years, we're diligent, we just jam money in this thing, okay? And we're trying to get to the point of being able to acquire a piece of land for the DPW for somewhere else. Hypothetically, this is all hypothetical. And eight years down the road, they look at this, they look at the reserves that we wrote diligently today, and they say, oh, well, this could be building replacement. Let's just tear down the DPW, and put a new one right there instead. And all of a sudden, the planning and building of reserves specific for a particular particular intent are out the window, because they choose to just tear down the building and put up a new one instead.
Let's look at the other side of that, though, so now we have a standalone reserve that's only for the purpose of acquiring land, and we never were able to acquire land, and we can't access that place.
Sure, point.
So.
No, I think.
I said, well, then you have a broader opportunity to use the funds, depending on what can come up, if it comes before, sorry, Zach, did you?
I was just going to second the idea of land acquisition. Just given that with South Street, we're looking at the possibility of having to do that for the ADA compliant curbs. So that's right away, you know, a working area to work in, within the public grid. So that's a good possibility that that would happen. And any future work that we do, that is a possibility.
That we need land.
Yeah.
That's funny.
I don't see, I think it's loosened up.
Do you?
I'm adding that language. Getting land acquisition into that.
Sort of uncomfortable adding that language.
Okay, what are you thinking?
I think reserve funds are meant to be purpose. That it's too, if you throw land in there, you really are, what are you really saving money for? You know, what are you really saving money for here, as a village? If you say, if you have a land acquisition reserve fund, then you know, and you have thought, we need to put money away for land acquisition because we might need it.
So. Oh, I'm sorry.
I tend to agree with you on that, Jeff. I think that, you know, if we're talking about, for example, acquiring Canal Core land by the arboretum, that's a very different ask and a very different set aside than acquiring necessary lands for maintenance of roads and ADA compatibility. So, you know, maybe, and, you know, I would imagine that if we acquired land for a more strategic purpose, you know, maybe it's not something that we can plan for quite as much, it's something that comes up and is available and related to other goals, and then maybe it's part of a, you know, a bond or whatever. I wonder if maybe something that could fit into the reserves here is perhaps just the more narrow definition of necessary land for required maintenance, maybe a compatibility or something. If that is something that we think we'll regularly require, Zach.
Or just have it lumped in with the reserve for infrastructure or capital improvements.
Right.
Well, if you have a building replacement, improvement, and alteration reserve fund, and you need to replace it, I don't know, I keep coming back.
Yeah, let's look at the media infrastructure.
Infrastructure.
I think it's embedded in the infrastructure.
More infrastructure, sure.
Yeah.
That makes more sense.
I think it's all in there.
Yeah, I think it's in there.
That language was very open-ended.
Yeah, so it could. Yeah, large.
High and low for a good definition.
Yeah.
What is the most flexible infrastructure repair reserve fund?
No, I put useful government infrastructure definition. So.
It's definitely in there, right? Road near sidewalk, paving, curbs, associated drainage.
Yeah, nice and infrastructure.
And we can plant shrubs in, I mean, a lot of that makes sense, right? So if somebody damages a fire hydrant, you got to all of it up or whatever, you got to be able to put back stuff. And if it had a shrub or a tree lamp or whatever, I mean, that reserve's got to be flexible enough to let you do that. And in this instance, too, right, you have the same language with the regular annual or a short. So the regularity of it prevents it from just being, let's go, replace bushes every year or whatever. But maybe, maybe the right thought here, and Jeff, tell me if this is a good idea or not, if as a result of the multi-year capital planning, and in looking at the comprehensive plan and thinking about it, we come to the conclusion, we'd like to start setting aside money for X, whatever it might be. Could be Canal Core land, it could be Ford Field land, it could be other things that we feel are integral to appropriate growth. Would we then want to just write the reserve language at that time and create it new? Or do you think it's best to have them all come together at the same time?
Create it when you need it.
Okay, so I would say let's defer on it.
Yeah, we don't have to. Yeah, like I think that was the original idea, was to defer it until there's more research and, you know.
Right, great.
And we have bigger funds to finance than land acquisition right now, it was just the.
Yeah, so to raise it, though, so we're thinking about that.
Yeah. Okay. Specific capital improvements required included. Oh, yeah, one of the ideas that I had mentioned in email to Jeff, and just to bring it to the public, is this idea that, not for the repair reserves, but for the capital reserves. For me, it would be nice if one of the conditions of pulling the money out was that the particular item that we've decided to spend the money on is included in the multi-year capital plan. Now, why? The biggest reason why is, it makes you look at the multi-year capital plan, it makes you look at the list of the different items that we are going to spend the money on. And if it's not in there, then you can't just pull it out for the spend. So Zach, let's go to, you know, a new truck coming down the road three years from now, we know we need it. Well, if we go in there for other things, by the time we get to the truck, but all the other things weren't in the plan. So what good is the plan if we don't have some restriction or some ability to say, it's got to be embedded in the multi-year capital? Now, you might say, well, it's not in the plan, that makes it too restrictive. Well, update the plan, perfectly simple solution. And then you always, by nature of having these reserves and having that language in it, you keep a multi-use capital plan in place in perpetuity, to ever have the money coming out of the reserves. And that's the best thing we can give residence, is this persistency of a multi-use capital plan that actually reflects what it is we want beyond the repair element.
No, I think that's a good thought. It seems that we're generally in agreement that we do want the long-term capital plan to be guiding the budgetary decisions and what we spend money on. I guess, it seems there are different ways of doing this. And we've talked about, there is a law, for example, that allows us to, Jeff, maybe you recall, we talked about a way that you can make the adoption of the budget dependent on the long-term capital plan. Is that the way that it was structured to the state level?
We don't know.
Okay. Anyway, I think there are some other ways to achieve persistency, I don't know exactly, I think we should talk about.
Yeah.
I don't know which one's right.
So, but getting back to the reserves, I'm trying to understand, try to find me again in a different way.
Sure.
Because I'm not seeing linear connection.
So let's think about the multi-year capital plan. We all know we need things that we haven't planned on for a long time. And things are going to come up three, four, or five years from now. And Zach, when you know they're in the multi-year capital plan, you're going to think, boy, it's a good thing I know I'm going to get that when I need it, right? It's going to guide your decision on repairs, it's going to guide your decision on others, because this thing's coming down the pike. Or a building needs a roof, we know it's going to get done, right? And all these big ticket items are going to be in our multi-year capital plan. There's no reason why they wouldn't be, aside from that planning, right? And when we put money aside in the budget for these multi-year expenses, and we start dumping money into reserves for them, the last thing we want to do is be taking the money out of the reserves for something that isn't even in the multi-year plan. So not for the repairs, but for the other reserves, right, the capital reserves. We know we can plan for what we need, right? There may on occasion be something that springs into existence that we didn't plan on, but that should generally be a repair, right? If it's not a repair, and something changes our mind, we need something different in that capital plan we didn't plan on. Maybe we need three Bobcats, not two, whatever we have, right? And we reflect on, let's think about that next year. We just go into the multi-year plan, we look at it, we review it, we maybe add that extra fifth year, because every year it's going to be one year stale, and we insert a new line item, Bobcat, maybe it slows down the purchase of a truck by six months or something, or a year, whatever. And so we insert something, and as soon as it goes in there, these reserves are able to be used for it. What we wouldn't be able to do, though, is say, hey, we need a new truck, it's not in the capital reserves, let's just go raid this reserves for it today.
You can only raid the reserve that it's designated.
That's true.
There's stopgaps with the reserve very much.
But what this is doing is, it's requiring good planning to get the money out. And all it means is that whatever we're spending our reserves on, whatever we're going to the public and saying, give, we're going to raise your taxes and put this into reserves, like, we're getting less for it. No, you're not, you're getting these things down the road. And when it goes into those reserves, we know exactly what we're going to be buying based on current value and whatever appreciation and inflation you got. and whatever appreciation and inflation you gotta deal with. What I don't wanna do is throw money in the reserves and not be able to confidently tell residents what they're gonna get for that. And so what we know is anytime money goes into a capital reserve, it's gonna come out for something that's on the multi-year capital plan. It's a very one-to-one. Worst case, it's not on the capital plan, multi-year plan, and we put it on the multi-year capital.
I would say that you're really limiting your ability to function as a government respond to unexpected items that come up that would be otherwise covered under the reserve language if we need it. But you have to go through the steps of revising your multi-year plan to include an unexpected need.
In which case, wouldn't it more likely be a reserve than a capital expense, or a repair than a capital?
No, no. No, it would be, it would be the purchase of a, an X, Y, Z piece of equipment that nobody anticipated we would need ever, and we need it now for, in the short-term future. And you can't get it, you have to change the capital plan to insert it. You're not, you're not letting reality drive the use of the reserve funds, I think is what I'm trying to say.
Yeah, Zach.
I was just, how long are we anticipating to take to build these resources up to protect this result? So. It may not be to the point where they're usable the way that you're talking about for a certain time. If firstly, you have to fund them out of the budget to do so, then a lot of that money in the budget is not being used for.
It's gonna have to be a balanceable. It's gonna have to be a balanceable. I mean, clearly, there's some amount of purchasing that has to happen. And we're gonna get into the, you can't use a reserve for debt financing conversation in a little bit.
Well, that's a whole nother discussion.
I know.
The steps of acquiring the money from a reserve, getting a new truck, that would be all budget discussion anyway. And I think it would be a plan to use. So you're gonna look at all your, you're gonna look at your capital multi-year when you're doing your budgeting, when you're establishing that. The more steps, again, you do in the individual reserves, the more kitchen tools you are.
Okay.
But if it's a.
I would think capital plan would drive the budget more than.
Right, and then the use of the reserves are gonna come naturally from the budgeting process and looking at the capital. Because you're not gonna go mid-year and say, let's buy a truck and do it out of that. That's, you absolutely shouldn't do that. That should be something that's discussed in February. You know what, we're looking at buying to purchase new trucks. You know, I think we can squeeze some money, let's take some money out of the reserve for one, purchase one through the budget. I think that's a natural budgetary thing. It's not gonna happen mid-year. It's not gonna be something that occurs that often out of sync.
So it's not always rating the reserve per se.
I mean, if you wanted to.
It's more on the budget cycle side of things.
And if you. Right, and if you really feel strongly about having that in there, maybe this language of, and I'm copying Justin here, a review of the multi-year capital plan must take place. So at least it is put into consideration, but not a mandatory.
Not a requirement.
We're not hamstrung by that per se, but. Would that be?
It's the consideration always of that plan, is that what, is that what she said?
I'm presenting risks that I'm thinking about and you're presenting solutions, and that's the point of these discussions. So if you guys keep coming up with them, that's good.
Yeah, yeah.
So I think all of this discussion is great. It's ultimately about making sure that we're accountable and future boards are accountable to making financial decisions based on a plan that's well thought out, right? And I think that, you know, I understand the tension with reserves about, you know, you wanna make them strict enough so that we're responsible, but not so loose that, you know, we're rating them all the time and stuff like that. The thing that I mentioned, so I think we kinda came back to making sure the budgets are aligned with the multi-year cap, capital plan, which is a good way to ensure that we're being responsible with these decisions. The law that I was referring to, Jeff, is GML 99G. And we might have mentioned that briefly. I don't know if it's a good idea or a bad idea, but basically that is based on, the multi-year capital plan document from the comptroller references that and says it largely follows that.
I'm sorry, the section was 99 what?
99-G, GML 99-G. And, you know, just something that we can look at, which basically it appears to me, make sure that the budget's taken into consideration, the multi-year capital plan along the lines of what the comptroller wants us to do with the multi-year capital plan.
I think what I'm hearing, which is good, is everybody's reasonably comfortable not having the language, but maybe some reference to it would be useful.
Yeah.
Yeah, if the step is just to review.
Yeah, would it be possible to insert, be it further resolved where the board considers and reviews the multi-year capital plan as part of the process? And that would be for the non-repair reserves of the capital reserve.
So I'm gonna do one. Yeah, I will put it in, I'm looking at for reference, the small fund equipment and vehicle reserve fund.
Okay.
The last vehicle resolved paragraph could add, expenditures from this reserve fund are by resolution of the board and trustees of the village of Pittsburgh after consideration of the existing multi-year plan, multi-year capital plan, subject to a permission rest preferment.
Sounds good. And if that's on every reserve fund, I think that's useful instruction for future boards. Hey, that's when it all falls apart, right? We're gonna do a good work.
No, I agree, but there was the conversation of limiting a future board too much.
Sure.
That's true too, you're right.
And this language is thoughtful enough?
Yep, that they at least take it into consideration.
Yep.
It's this, the board's personality.
Yeah. Okay. All right, so I've got to continue to have more questions. Anybody else wanna interject or?
Oh, you're in a roll.
No, not at all.
Justin, Lily? No? All right, so this is the debt reserve conversation, was next on my notes. Am I correct that no reserve fund can fund debt taken on that essentially has to simply be put in the budget?
No.
No?
No.
No.
You can create a debt.
Reserve, and that I would recommend to the village. I think we had this discussion when we had our budget meeting, one budget meeting. Is the only reserves not established in this language is a debt reserve. You have debt, if you have ongoing debt, the point of having debt reserve is to cover you if something happens, you need to pay off that reserve. So if you need a debt fund. So I would suggest you do have a debt reserve.
So for bond.
Or bond.
I'm just saying as an example.
Question for you then in that respect. Can all of these funds, both the repair reserves and the capital reserves, include in any way language that would allow it to pay for debt incurred for a like expense?
I'm gonna pre-answer him and say no. I think it's a very specific reserve.
Okay, so then would we, for each of these reserves, have, so we have infrastructure reserve, we have infrastructure repair reserve, would we need infrastructure debt reserve?
Nope, you're overthinking it.
Just one debt.
One debt. One debt for sewer, one debt for justice.
Great.
My question, I understand, is whatever your, like, debt column is.
Yep. It would fund anything that's a debt, a bond or a band. I would put, I'd limit to that or a lease or something like that. I'd put the specific language of that type of debt. The debt, it's the debt vehicle.
Yeah, it's not like we owe, like, if we owe debt on a copier or something.
Right, no. It would be a whole of the debt, so it would be debt related to a bond or a band or a lease agreement.
Could be any debt?
Any debt.
Okay, so let's go back to last year's budget process, when we knew we were gonna take on debt for itself. And we thought collectively, hey, let's make sure we start putting money into reserve as the anticipated cost of the debt we're about to incur.
Correct.
That amount of money, should we have done that for two years in a row and had the excess money in the budget at the end, we would have put that in the debt reserve fund.
Correct.
And then the next year, we do it again. So essentially, having one debt reserve fund will allow us to pre-fund anticipated future debt.
Anticipated future debt payments, yes.
I'm good with creating a debt reserve fund if everybody agrees.
Yeah, that was, I think I was trying to encourage us to look at a debt reserve, because that is the perfect animal, because I seen that in place. My previous employment, we had a debt reserve in water. When water was disbanded, that debt reserve was able to pay off the existing debt of that fund.
Sewer has a lot of money, do we just need to create this for general?
I'd create it for both.
Create it for both, all right.
It's language, it's just my, they shouldn't mirror each other.
Yeah.
In as much ways as they can.
Okay.
So that's Jeff, and that's right up to.
Yep, that's next.
That's an action item too.
We've, this board or other boards before us have probably talked about this one, but one of the main things that came up and that I think disrupted our discussions and our finances for several years was the cost of litigation. So according to this part of the, and again, I don't know if I'm leading us into a good direction or a very bad one, just wanna toss this out there, it says here that certain reserve funds can be utilized to help protect the budget against known risks, for example, a potential lawsuit.
Need having a litigation reserve fund?
Yeah.
We should have had one five years ago.
I think it's a good idea.
I, I don't see a problem with having that, it never crossed really, my mind here is trying to cover the basics. Because we certainly have the money coming out of that.
Yeah, it's been a bad.
Couple of years, yeah.
So do you think the next 12 are gonna be better?
If the next 12 are better, we gotta.
We can start by asking Charlie Fitzsimmons.
Well, if the next 12 are better, then the 13th might be really bad. And if we save in advance a little bit, if we have the capacity to.
If it doesn't get, we'll be ready.
It's just, do you wanna assume there is a future risk?
My main concern is that if somebody sees that's there, they might go after it.
Wow, that's interesting.
Or we might be more inclined to take more risks and rely on it, which I don't wanna do.
I don't think the former's a problem. Because.
They're gonna sue us nowhere, right?
They don't have any way to. They have to spend money for us, that's requiring us to spend money, not give it to the money.
Right.
It's, it's the expensive litigation. I'm hoping that the attorney advising the respective boards would keep an eye on making the process and things the boards do as bulletproof as possible, which has always been my goal.
Right.
So.
Okay.
You know, but that doesn't stop people from suing you, and we are living in an extremely litigious world.
I have a question. Because we've had to make some settlements. Would it come out of that?
No.
So this would be.
Well, hold on. It depends on the language.
How the language, I mean, I'm just thinking, let's have.
We just finished paying off a.
To Justin's point.
A settlement.
I would just limit it to litigation expenses.
Okay.
So that it's not a target.
Yeah, right.
Could you set the language for such a reserve to be litigation that exceeds a certain threshold? Exceeds a certain dollar amount, like, we're not gonna hit it for 5,000 litigation, we're gonna hit it for when it hits 20, 25,000. Because, because also, well, let's also take into consideration, we have insurance to cover the board that hits when we hit a certain threshold of our litigation. So when it hits like 25,000 or 30,000, then they jump in and give you like 25,000. So let's say the litigation, and let's be honest, we can handle with our fund balance up to a certain point that it only kicks in, we can take the reserve if it starts hitting like the 50,000 threshold, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We, it seems like we might wanna look at the, I need to study the language of that policy that covers litigation and make sure this complements it in a way that makes sense.
Right, because there's, there's two things, two different things working, that's your officers and.
Right.
Whatever, and that provides you with the defense after you pay the deductible. The 70 Monroe Ave litigation was not part of that.
Yeah, it wasn't.
Huh?
It did.
Well, why is, why aren't they providing us?
They only provided the 25 to 50,000.
That was our coverage?
That was it, that's all you got.
Okay.
So what I'm saying is something that kicks in after that coverage.
Right.
If that makes sense.
Yeah, yeah, that makes sense.
You know, if you need to fund like a thousand a year into it, and like you said, it just suddenly grows and you have something.
Or what you do is if you ever budget a certain amount of legal expenses in the course of the year and you come in under, you can take that amount.
You can make that decision at the end of the year.
Yeah, right. You can make the decision at the end of the year, how much do we want to put? It may be zero, it may be something, depending on where we are in legal costs in the years before. But having it set aside and ready, I think makes sense.
I would normally say that's not needed, I mean, it's probably, then I've worked here. So I would agree with Justin that, you know, that seems more of a specialty reserve issue.
Well, and also conversely, let's say, let's live the fantasy for a minute that we really don't have any litigation for a number of years. It doesn't mean we have to always keep funding it every year. We can move in and out of that if needed.
Right. And I mean, even limit the amount of the reserve, like we did for the catastrophic, we limited it to 300,000. It's earning interest, it's great, but it's kinda living in its own land.
Right.
It's done, so maybe limit this reserve to 75,000.
Yeah, something, yeah.
Or take the post-75 Monroe average cost, right? Which we've never exceeded this, so yeah, just pick a number like 50 or 75,000 and say any single litigation or.
Yeah, yeah, but it's there.
Yeah.
That's the main idea.
I think it makes sense.
Because I'm sure we all think of some red flags there.
So I guess we need a litigation fund. Litigation reserve then?
Litigation reserve fund, yeah.
All right, what are the conditions?
Over, what did you say, over 50,000?
Expenditures for such litigation.
Not covered by insurance.
Exceed the insurance coverage.
Right.
Well, you have, you have two things, when I, insurance coverage, you have a deductible.
Right, so.
Let's cover both.
I would, how am I trying to say that?
Then exceed both.
Exceeds both.
Right?
Yes.
It'd have to be, we wouldn't wanna use this unless it's a big issue.
Right, right.
Yeah, I guess, you know, what this should allow us to do is provide some sort of a buffer so that we're able to continue along with our long-term capital planning and give taxpayers predictability about what's gonna happen, even if there is some kind of litigation arises.
Right.
So the expenditures.
Exceeds 50,000 over.
I would just say, exceed, you could probably write it loose enough, where it exceeds the deductible and insurance coverage as held at the time or as, right? As available at the time.
Yeah.
So if we decide to raise our coverage with inflation, then that number automatically goes up with it.
Yeah, and then we could cap it.
Right. And we don't have to put a number on the reserve that it would go up to, that would just be up to future votes.
Insurance coverage.
Yeah.
Yeah, I guess the amount that we refer to would be.
So you're gonna spend, so I'm understanding this correctly.
But I like this, because it doesn't.
You're gonna pay the, you're gonna pay the deductible.
You know.
The insurance is gonna pay whatever medical is gonna pay.
Yep.
And when you reach a point that is $50,000 beyond the sum of what's gonna be.
I would say when, when deductible insurance need are met. Or met or exhausted.
Or exhausted, met or, however exhausted.
Then.
Then.
Then you can take from the reserve.
Yeah.
Okay.
Then the reserve can be added.
I think that's great. So we pay a bit, insurance steps in, pays a bit, or doesn't, then it. And as soon as they do or don't pay, then this comes in.
Yeah, otherwise, we're wiping out our budget periodically.
Yeah.
So this is good.
Yeah, there might be another municipality that has one of these.
That's the first I've heard of it, but then again, the first I've ever seen.
You could look elsewhere.
And if I'm not mistaken, making these reserves is essentially, I mean, obviously we do it for the right cause, but the comptroller then would look at money that we're saving and essentially know it's in a good place.
Yes.
Yeah, I would be saying more, saying directly.
And if we don't have it in a good place for a good purpose, then that's when we get a merit.
Right, yeah.
We're taxing too much.
You're taxing too much, you have too much in your fund balance.
Right, you haven't identified why you're taxing people, quit taxing people.
Yeah, right, why you have so much in your fund balance, your fund balance policy is this, you have 100% over that.
Right, so now by having the reserves. Right. So now by having the reserves, you can make the argument, look at everything that's unfunded or funded. Whatever the case may be.
If they see it in a purpose such as this, they're gonna go fabulous and move on.
Great.
It's not even, not be more than that.
Okay.
Good.
It's definitely more transparent.
Yeah. Good ideas. I, I had a question on sewer reserves. If we could move forward, this is still on the memo. On the, the four sewer reserves, yeah. What is the plan there? Was it to take all four melded into one? It looks like the first one, the G232P is okay.
Yeah.
Yep. Right, that's the sewer line adjacent to the pub.
Yep.
It looked like the fourth one for Wood Creek was okay.
Yeah.
Right, that's legit. And then we had the 232R, which is the existing sewer repair fund. That seems okay, but you're gonna change the language to what you have here?
No, no, it's sewer, actual sewer repair.
The sewer repair. That's different than sewer, you're not replacing that with any new language, or were you?
No.
I don't think so.
No.
It's not the sewer fund.
It's not the sewer replacement?
No.
Sewer repair.
Sewer repair. So, okay, could you tell me what the difference between sewer repair and sewer replacement? I mean, is replacement literally taking everything out, putting brand new stuff in? Do we have any money in that right now?
There is no such thing.
Yeah.
We have to set it up first.
Just checking. So then this sewer repair fund was gonna stand alone as is with the prior language. Is that correct?
Yep.
Did we modify the language to be current with all the other ones? So it's identical?
You'd have to. Yeah, you could.
Are there additional steps to do so?
Just another resolution.
Kind of like the idea of having all the language.
It's had the consistency of language.
Right, like we, we scrapped everything we did. We restructured.
Have you seen anything? Well, we're not scrapping.
I know.
Yeah, we're just.
We're, we're.
Are we, we're gonna transfer it to.
It's almost like an editing action through the resolution.
Can you do that? Because there is no question on the reserve.
It's created already.
It's created already. Uh, would there be a resolution with language of that existing?
You'd have to transfer it to a new fund.
Oh, we'd have to absolutely set up a new one.
Yeah. Can no one set up a new one, but.
So again, it's like.
No reason to do that.
There's no reason. It's good enough. Okay. It's good enough. The old, could you provide us with language for the old one? I don't know how G232R reads, but it'd be nice to read it.
I think we should have that.
Oh yeah, we have that.
It's gonna require a digging expedition.
Really?
Before, yeah.
Oh, I don't want to use all your time for that. You got other things to do.
I, I might have that. Wasn't that from the first year we, you brought out?
We have that.
There's a packet.
Yeah. It was in a big packet.
Wow.
You know what? Why don't we ask Laura?
My memo, my memo of whatever for this one on the reserves is a summary of that investigation.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But Laura, our archivist, can, can take that up.
Is it possible to make a motion that takes that reserve and puts it in the same time period, in the same board meeting? So we basically just reiterate the same motion? Or we make a motion to just say, here it is? So that way it's all at the same meeting, all embedded in the same minutes?
I really don't know.
Your minutes could acknowledge.
The existence.
Okay.
The existence of it.
Existence and probably should point to how it was created.
Yeah.
Right.
Which means digging.
I like that, though. I like where you're going with that because then it's like, people say, well, you never did anything about that other reserve. This way we're bringing all the reserves for, this one's staying for the following reasons, for the following language.
Yeah.
You know.
And maybe it's not all in the same motion, maybe it's a separate motion for reserves that we're, we're still acknowledging exist and are there, bringing them.
I, I would have it.
Or something like that.
I think it's more like the, the record will reflect that there isn't existing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It doesn't have to be in the form.
It's an acknowledgement.
And just have it in the minutes or have it in.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I agree with that. The only reason I hesitate is when you have a reserve that the language isn't clear or this and that, it's easier to move those funds along with one that's pretty clear, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, for example, you mentioned already, for example, Wood Creek and the pub. You know, although they're more recent ones, there's no reason to change that language. But we should acknowledge their existence.
I think it'd be great to see them all. And then this brings us to the fourth one, right? Which is, it exists, but the money in that fund, 250, cannot be utilized until the money is properly transferred to a capital fund within the sewer fund. So I think in this case, we're moving the 250 to the sewer reserve fund that is getting created brand new. Is that correct?
That's what you can do.
Yeah. Okay. Do we have that in the packet or was that not?
I have, I, I, that would be me presumably what you're gonna do. I can't do that without.
Okay.
Direction.
So we've got a sewer building replacement improvement.
But there's a lot of sewer capital funds that, you know.
That we could shift it to, you could, you could split it up.
It's a planning, you have to plan where you want to put the 250.
Okay.
And that should be part of your.
Budget.
Budget, long-term capital plan.
That would be one of our first things.
Okay. And let me ask the next question. Can anybody in reading these reserves think of a sewer cost that isn't embedded in one of these sewer funds that is being created? Or previously ahead of you in the pub or, right, see what I'm saying? If we're not gonna create anything new, which is fine, do these three or four sewer funds cover anything we might need?
Exactly.
Well, no, the question is, do, is there a spot in the new funds that, to land that money?
Right, I guess what I'm saying, and what I'd like to know is if it lands all of the money, all of the 250, that that's everything that the sewer might need. So let's talk about that as an example, right? So we're gonna put a bath for it. That amount of money, we'd want to leave in the current fund? Or would we want to drop it in one of the new?
You would have to drop it into the new.
Drop it in one of the new ones. Okay.
You can't. Right now where it is, you can't use it.
Okay, and.
Yeah, that's because of the language.
Right. We have no access.
So then the old sewer repair fund, we're not creating a new one, but we do have sewer infrastructure improvements where you, where you could use some of that with general.
Yes.
Other, okay.
Well, you can't use any, put any of this money in a general capital fund.
Sewer, sewer, there is.
It's gotta go to a capital fund. It can't go to a, a repair.
Ah, so the 250's gotta go to a capital.
So you would look at what percentage you want to put in this capital fund or whatever. You could look at that. And that would be a budgetary description.
And we have to make that decision before we ever use that money.
Yes.
Yes.
And that'll be at the end of the long-term multi-year planning.
The other point when you missed is there's a general reserve that exists that we cannot access. That's another reserve we need to look at and decide how you want to break that into, is, do we determine if that was capital or?
Uh, which one are you talking about? Give me the.
The general.
The A232R, currently the only reserve fund, the general fund is.
Right. Where, how much is in that?
Probably around 180 right now with interest.
This is the non-sewer. This is the general.
Yeah, it's the only one that exists in general.
And we've got to drop that over into any one of these new reserves.
I, I.
In the general fund.
Yes, in the general fund and it should match. We don't, we know what it is.
There's a bunch of stuff.
It was a bunch of stuff. So I think actually it could almost go to any of the reserves.
Okay. But this all comes down to.
Well, no, no, hold on.
What was it?
Yes, no, no. The assumption is that this is a capital reserve, unused capital reserve.
Okay.
The safest course.
Would be capital.
It is that if you can't identify what the money is, then the safest course is to assume, to assume that it's capital, that can't just go back in the general fund. There's a choice. You could put it in the, you could put it right back in the general fund.
No, no, that's not what I was saying.
But you can't do that. I mean, that's not a safe way because there's an obvious intent that was supposed to be.
Be done by the controller.
Capital fund. So you're gonna transfer it legally to a legally constituted.
Especially you're saying almost like like for like.
Well, yeah, it's, it's relying on the fact that you may transfer unused capital fund money to capital fund money with the same debt space.
Good.
You are missing one reserve.
We're not, am I? What was I gonna say?
You're missing the catastrophic reserve in the sewer.
Of the sewer.
Well, yeah, that's, I mean, that's.
I'm just saying it is a little bit.
That's, that's there. Yeah, that's already there, but.
It's good. It's solid. It's.
We just did that.
We just did that.
Do you have one of those ones listed on the back?
No, it's not.
No, it's not.
A different one?
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah, there was $300,000 or something like that, undesignedated in the sewer fund.
Yeah.
So we, it's, in every board's mind, that money was, oh my God, if we lose the siphon, we've got the money for it. And, and the controller was not happy with that. So we put it in a fund that said it. So now the money's not just sitting there unreserved.
Okay. All this is outstanding, and I love the idea of trying to bring forward all the language from all these reserves in a, a single minutes, right? Particularly in the meeting where we designate all this money goes into these reserves, right? And it'd be nice to have a final at the end of that meeting, right? Here's all the reserves and here's their current amount of money sitting in them. And then here's all the documents that support those reserves. Very easy for all of us to reference.
Yeah.
At some point, it doesn't have to be right away.
And we would put the sewer reserve in that because it is an existing reserve.
Yeah, all of the original ones.
You know, all of that. Everything would be on that list, as we say.
Good.
Were we looking for the, Jeff's research notes on the reserve funds that we were talking about previously? That was, that was sent around to us on.
Yeah, you, you, you've done some research too on this.
A little bit, yeah. And I can't even remember what I came up with, to be honest, but I, I found your email from July 18th.
It should be a memo that says what.
Leave it for all the minutes.
Yeah.
Can you forward this to me, Justin?
Yeah, sure.
See me. Keep putting on that too. Justin?
Yep.
Thanks. All right. I'm off the memo.
You can move it along.
These are good discussions.
They are. They're great.
Okay.
Our finance, yeah.
Well, gotta be better. All right. Uh, this is the very first, um, equipment and vehicle repair reserve. And I believe the language sounds like half a reserve, not a repair reserve. So this is the first be it further resolved sentence number two.
You want it for the sewer?
Yeah, this is for the sewer. So creating a sewer fund, equipment and vehicle repair reserve. The language says the purpose of the reserve is to accumulate money to finance the cost of vehicles and equipment utilized. That sounds like the, the language from the capital, not from the repair.
Yeah, to finance it. Well, you go to the next sentence, the purpose of the reserve.
No.
Right? Is to accumulate money to finance the cost of.
No, yeah, but that, what I'm looking, what I'm looking for is, okay.
The first repair reserve.
Right, so this should say the repair of.
Yeah, so the, well, what you got, the first repair reserve is the infrastructure repair reserve is about six pages longer. And it's a fairly lengthy, it's, it's much different. It's the cost of reconstruction of the.
Yeah, but, okay.
Yeah.
But, but I think we, we solve this particular problem. We'll say the purpose of this reserve is to accumulate money to finance the cost of the repair.
The repair of.
Perfect, perfect. Yeah.
Good catch.
Thanks. And then the, um, the second one is correct. Uh, so this gets to.
Second one, whatever.
I'm sorry, I'm just flipping the pages of the.
Yeah, so this is the general.
The general.
Equipment and vehicle repair.
That one's correct. It's got the.
Oh, second, second reserve.
Second reserve.
I'm sorry, I didn't know if it meant another paragraph. That's what I'm saying.
So then go to the.
Yeah, third.
Yeah, hold on.
That one's correct. This, this is.
The second one is for creating a fund, equipment and vehicle repair reserve fund. So if I really have a purpose of the reserve is to accumulate money, finance the cost of vehicles and equipment utilized by general. So it should be repair of again.
Repair of again.
Get it on the.
I'm on the second one.
Okay, yeah.
The cost of the repair of.
Yeah.
Yep. Yeah, that's right. Yep. So number one, number two, that was correct. Three is okay. Four is general fund reserve that is purchased.
Wait, wait, hold on. Which, which one did you say was okay? Creating a general fund equipment and vehicle reserve fund?
Yes, so let's see.
Well, where are you on sewer fund equipment or?
I think that was okay.
That was okay, okay. I'm just, I'm clicking along here.
I think this is the one, I just want to make sure I'm off.
That one's okay. That one's okay. The next one is not.
It's a sewer fund, sewer replacement reserve fund.
Correct. That one has the purchase language, not the. Well, no, this is the question I had. I'm sorry. This one is correct. I'd have a question about why replace? So this whole fund is set up to just replace the entire system. All right, so then that one was okay. Repair reserve, that was okay. Repair reserve, okay. That one's okay.
Which one?
I'm on, uh, creating a sewer fund, building, repair and reserve.
Did we hit infrastructure yet?
Yep.
Oh.
The Spanish infrastructure.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go back to the first one here.
Can I go back to the first one and finish?
Sorry, can, can I just clarify on the, the sewer replacement reserve fund? So it says, um, uh, the estimated cost of such capital investment is $500,000, but, you know, it, um, is this just for any replacement?
Let me, let me get there. Where? You're looking for the.
Sewer fund, sewer replacement.
Sewer replacement reserve fund.
It's sewer replacement fund. I think, I think what that is supposed to be, and maybe this is where it's confused, the maximum.
Yeah, it's gotta be the, it's an estimate of, of the cost, the maximum cost of this thing.
The maximum amount in the fund.
Right.
I think it reads though, the maximum, the estimate cost of such, it should be the maximum funding.
No, I think this is, the estimated cost of such capital improvement is $500,000.
I think that's meaning you have to have a repair of $500,000.
No, it's not, no, okay. So, so with a specific capital fund, you have to put in what you're, what, what specific capital thing is you're doing? And the, an estimate of the maximum cost of that.
Would an example of that be what we just did with the siphon?
Be an excellent example.
Yeah, because we asked specifically Scott Harder to come up.
Right, so I don't know where the $500,000 came from, but for it to be a specific capital, it has to have the maximum amount in there. Are you thinking something different?[1713.75]
Yes, I'm thinking something different. I'm thinking when we had the discussions, we were thinking the maximum amount we wanted to see in that fund was $500,000, but you could have the replacement of a sewer line on a whole street, and that repair would be $150,000.
Why wouldn't that come out of the repair?
Yeah, that's my question, I guess.
That's repair.
That's replacement. If you're digging up the whole sewer line and replacing it, and you're replacing, so then this line, then this language isn't clear, though.
Yeah, I guess, I just want to. Okay, yeah, I'm just trying to understand what the boundaries are between one fund and another, when is it, when is it cost to repair, um?
To me, a repair is.
Well, we have to define it.
It come in.
That has to say, no, the reserve fund is going to have to say, a replacement is defined as, and the repair funds are going to say, a repair is defined as. So, I don't know what definition you want to use, um.
But that ultimately goes in this particular document, right? There's a, a specific definition.
Yeah, but remember, repairs to equipment and, and vehicles is pretty clear.
Yeah.
But a repair to the sewer fund, which is, by the way, the one that's already created.
Correct. I'm more thinking it's the anticipated replacement. You, let's say you're digging up a road, you're going in, and you go, you know what, while we're in here, let's just replace the sewer line, bring it up to current standards, that's replacement, that's not repair.
Yeah, that's what you were.
Does this involve the home station, or is this, the home station is not?
Home station's already got its own reserve.
Okay.
Maybe, I, I, I don't know, maybe it's just, uh, we're overcomplicating things here.
I don't think so.
Uh, well, I was just saying, since we've already got a sewer system throughout the entire village, except for like, stuff like 75th Road, maybe it's essentially all just repair.
I, you know what, I, I think I would go with some language that says, um, any removal and replacement, or any removal and reconstruction of existing sewer that exceeds 100 feet would be considered replacement, or 1,000 feet or 500 feet, like, what is, what is a major sewer project? Where you gotta go in and completely redo?
Where it's more of a replacement than a repair.
Right.
So, looking under the siphons going on the canal, um, those most likely wouldn't be replaced or repaired, there would be new lines that would be directionally bored in parallel to that.
So, does it replace?
Well, that would be replacement.
But that's, but that's the catastrophic sewer.
Yeah, that's the catastrophic.
Let's use a different one.
Let's do, let's do.
So, we're on the street, we're doing southern. I mean, it's 2,500 feet long, there's a section sewer that runs on the east side from Jefferson down to Sutherland, and there's a section on the west side that runs from Long Hill.
Let me ask this question, let me ask the question a different way. What is the shortest section that you can envision in the village where you would replace the whole section?
It's hard to, to put a number on that, honestly, I, I don't see that being.
Well, I mean.
The length, I think you're talking about.
Yeah, yeah.
The length.
If you want to say anything over, uh, 100 feet, so that's, that's, that's a.
Wondering if we can research and see what, how it's defined with other communities even, that, I mean, we're not the only people.
We may be the only community that's doing this.
Well, and I, I guess that.
It's a first.
That might go into my next question, what, what are we really concerned about here? You know, with, with having a particular replacement sewer fund? I guess, maybe I'm not that concerned about unrestrained spending on fixing sewer pipes.
Yeah.
And, and in that case, you know, maybe just forget about that replacement fund and just call it all repair and make sure that.
Can we call it a repair and replacement?
Yeah.
I, I, you can turn this into a type capital pretty easily.
Alright, let's do that.
Then you don't have to estimate the cost, you could just say, um, replacement of.
Replacement, repair.
Sewer replacement fund, and then you define, um, the sewer, you know, for projects, uh, exceeding 100 feet.
But not just a pipe.
Yeah.
Getting everything.
Yeah, why would it be so restrictive?
Be above that pipe, below that pipe possibly, barrels, manholes.
Or, you call it all repairs and just dump it into the repair fund.
I hate to say this, but is it technically a repair? Because the sewer line is essentially working, we're going in, you're stripping out the street, and you're looking at it while we're in there, let's get it, so we don't have any future problems, let's replace it, because the infrastructure is old.
Which we talked about.
So, that is actually a replacement.
Why can't we have the, creating a sewer fund for sewer replacement and repair and replacement? Why wouldn't we just put it all in one fund?
Because we could.
That way, we're kind of.
Then you gotta bring that fund.
Well, then it would be justified.
I, I think it's overly restraining to think of it in terms of two separate funds, there's a fuzzy line and, and.
Yeah.
We want those to be.
Then we come up with a sort of official definition.
Repair, repair, maintain and replace.
Repair what?
Maintain and replace.
Repair, maintain.
But not, you won't want.
Repair, maintain.
Maintains the general.
Repair, maintain and replace.
But it also have to through like road repairs and stuff like that, or any other infrastructure that would be, uh, jeopardized or tore up or whatever due to.
During, yeah.
Those repairs, maintenance and.
I, so, I don't know sewer well enough. Is there a time 10, 15 years from now that you're gonna have to throw a million dollars, $2 million into just completely overhaul the whole thing and put in brand new replacements?
The whole system?
Well.
No, I think it's street by street, I think it's the looking at.
Yeah, typically, I mean, you know, most maintenance repairs would be done on a smaller scale. It's 100 year old system that's still in pretty good shape, and as long as we're not gonna be catastrophic.
I, I like Lisa's language, repair, maintenance and replace. If you, if you replace sewer line, you gotta fix it. You gotta fix the top, the surface.
Yeah.
Now, the maintenance, though.
Even maintenance as well, if you're, if you have to dig up a manhole and start repairing a lot of the brickwork inside the barrels of those manholes, and that's a repair.
Don't want, don't you want the maintenance over in the general sewer budget?
Because then again, it's like now define maintenance?
Yeah, right.
I don't know, you know, we're not even down a rabbit hole.
I don't want defined maintenance, I want non-regular, non-annual.
Oh, here we go.
Then also lining of those sewers, you know, the problem that carries that, you know, have road infiltration. You run a line out through there to, I don't know why you don't just bump lump it all into one, um.
Well, you can do.
You can.
Certain.
Problem is you can't, because it, it's, it's a repair reserve fund or a capital reserve fund.
Yeah, that's.
And, and if you replace a sewer line, is that a capital improvement?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is it?
Yeah, yeah.
Well, for replacing, that's for a reason, which would be a repair.
Yeah, but that's like taking a truck and, I mean, eventually you gotta sell the truck by anyone, that's a replacement, right? Fixing it as you go, and the sewer line's gonna be the same thing, eventually you have to give up on.
There we go.
It's, it's a different.
Well, maybe, so maybe your point is actually, when we have these budget discussions, you just constantly hammer home, never fund the replacement, because we're never actually replacing anything.
I would just make it a repair fund. I would make it a sewer maintenance or repair fund.
Yeah.
To me, the capital part of that would be the additional, the additions.
That'd be good. So, even if you replace it, it's still maintenance and repair?
Right.
And basically?
Well, replacing a section, it's maintenance and repair.
Okay, so is the section of the, the whole street?
Yeah, that's.
Because it's a section of our.
You're not doing the whole sewer system.
Yeah, okay, that's always gonna be replaced.
Repair, maintenance.
As long as that situation is covered, I'm good.
More funds, more fun, except for sewers.
Okay, what was that?
More funds, more fun, except for sewers.
Uh, for an example, what was done on Stonegate, and we're back.
Yeah.
Eight years ago, so there was some rerouting that was done because sewers were being one through the back of the crop, or the seven, I believe it was, one, twelve.
Yeah.
Yes, that's.
That would be an acceptable reason.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah. Is, is there any condition by which maintenance is needed?
I would say the lining of the pipes.
And should we not do that through the general budgeting process?
We have been trying to do that through the general.
Lining of the pipes, roof cutting, cleaning, any kind of service work.
Well, that.
I don't want that in reserves.
No, I shouldn't need that.
I don't think maintenance is the right word here for the reserves.
Isn't lining, no?
I think repair is.
Repair? Lines, repair, I think, I got three things.
Well, we already have.
Okay.
We, we have a repair sewer repair fund.
Well, then I think we still need to pull that reserve and make sure it has the right language for all this.
Because if it's open ended enough, it has the right language.
I, I think we have a sewer repair fund.
That's leaving.
And that might be it.
Yeah, I'm, I'm okay with that, as long as it covers the reconstruction of the.
So, let's see the language, we'll go from there.
Yeah, that's, that's my only concern, that's how I look at that.
Because we need a repair.
Yeah, right.
One down.
Good, alright.
Okay, then.
Alright.
Not, not that I, for what?
Now, let's pick four, yeah, now let's pick four.
We only made four.
Could I ask a question?
No.
The group's getting a little.
Might you, might you like to do this at another time?
No, I'm kidding.
Do we need to be done with this tonight, you think?
I'm prepared to work on it.
Okay, you guys still okay for a few more? I got a few more questions.
Let's, why don't we just finish your questions?
I got practicable, so the vehicle and equipment repairs financed with monies in this fund shall, to the extent practicable, satisfy the Village of Pittsburgh's green and sustainability initiatives.
That's your agent.
I like the intent, it's interesting, and I'm on every single one.
Oh, sorry, okay.
And, um, in looking up or trying to figure out the words practicable, it is essentially able to be done, it's not a price sensitive word. And as a result, the language, um, when something is practicable, um, essentially says it has to be done to satisfy the green and sustainability goals and initiatives. I think that's, I love the intent, I just want it to be a little bit more sensitive. And so, one could, in looking at different laws, add something practicable as determined by the Board of Trustees.
I would say that you take the word practical out.
Okay.
And you put in practical.
It's a little less forward leaning than I'd like, but I prefer it.
Which means that we sure would like to do it.
Yeah.
But this is just outrageously out of our reach.
Yeah.
As long as it's reviewed.
It's, it's a discretionary word.
Yeah.
Yeah, the $10 million dollar, uh, hundred yard truck is probably.
No, no, that's what.
Yeah, I like practical.
We are reading on the same page.
Alright, I was trying to say. Everybody good with that?
Yeah, yep.
Alright, thank you.
See, it's another soul, if, if you actually get it, add a soul when you do it.
Yeah, alright, alright. I mean, this speaks a little bit to like EV and ICE, right? Which one you are, and what?
If I'm in that clear, you would need attorneys. Okay, let's, here you go.
Okay, next, let's keep going.
Okay, this was, uh, creating a sewer fund, equipment, vehicle reserve fund, that we are still digging. And one of the, uh, the very last line of it was, um, the expenditures for this reserves are by resolution of the board, subject to permissive referendum pursuant to, unless the period of probable usefulness of the type capital improvement is less than five years. So, you introduce some wording that allows it to avoid the permissive referendum if the time period of usefulness is less than five years. What's an example of that?
I mean, the language, the language in my law, I used.
Good.
I'm sorry, which paragraph?
I'm sure if I thought about it long enough, there'd be a rationale for it.
I don't even know, you're on, you're on the sewer fund, equipment and vehicle repair reserve fund?
I'm on the creating a sewer fund, equipment and vehicle reserve fund.
And what?
I'm not repair.
And what it basically is telling us is, the purpose of the reserve is to accumulate money to finance the cost of the purchase of equipment and vehicles necessary for sewers. Okay. To get the money out of the reserve, it says that the expenditures from this reserve fund are by resolution of the Board of Trustees, subject to a permissive referendum, which if I'm not mistaken, is simply bringing it to a public hearing.
No, a public hearing, and then if, uh, petition, you have to do something with the results. And if a petition is filed, uh, within.
A certain number of days.
A certain number of days by a certain percentage of the electorate, then.
It goes on as.
Then you have to have, then you have to have a vote, a vote, a resident, a bill of life vote.
Okay, great. But pursuant to subdivision eight, section 6C. Unless the period of probable usefulness of the capital improvement is less than five years. Are we all pretty comfortable that's a fairly low cost item?
Yeah, well.
Got anything that you buy that only lasts five years as a capital investment for the sewer?
Remember sewer shares with general.
General.
Along with the Kubota slash.
Yeah, well.
It is a star subject.
Yeah.
Five years.
Yeah.
I mean, no, I, I mean, if you're looking for an honest answer, I'd like to replace it with three years.
Wow.
They really get so much use.
Rusty.
Yeah, it's.
Well, the tool cats especially, um, which, those are, with the attachments, about 60,000 dollars.
Okay, could I have that line instead of saying five years, say three years?
Yeah.
Because I don't, I'd like for us to have, again, just a little teeter, if we're spending 60 grand, to have to have it come to a vote, right? Rather than not be so.
I think five years actually comes from banning and bonding documents.
Also comes from.
Comptroller. I seen it. There's a reason there's five.
I don't know the answer to your question.
Can, can you guys revisit that so we understand what's derivative of five years?
I know there's something with five.
Can you make that an action item?
Make that a question, okay.
Okay, well, sorry, can you make that an action item where we revisit that? So, we understand if it's, if it's something that we, if it's practicable.
Yeah, if it's possible to be three years, does anybody really care here? Does it seem like it should be a little shorter for that type of cost item?
Because we might get four, five years out of it.
Well, then you don't use it.
Yeah, yeah.
Which one is it? There I am. So, this is, this is for the sewer, more than one, which is giving.
Well, it also.
Yeah, it is the.
Conduction with.
With, so, in this particular instance.
Let's take a whole answer.
It was the creating a sewer fund, equipment and vehicle reserve. And that same language was in the general, right?
Right, so the question is, can we shorten it?
Yeah. Not see any reason.
So, that, the intent is to not have us use this fund for the tool cat, or to use it for the tool cat?
It would be to use it for the tool cat, but have to have it come to a permissive referendum rather than not.
I, I think the determination, there's a, um, schedule by the state or something on the lifespan.
Is it subdivision eight, section 6C?
There's something with it, yeah.
It might go hand in hand.
Yeah, it goes hand in hand, there's something where determination is.
So, we reflect what the schedule is, it's determined by the state.
Useful life of something, that's determined, that's part of the problem that's holding up the bond, is because the, the road surface determines the useful life of it, and that's the length you can bond something. So, it might be reflective of that with the reserves.
Let's confirm.
In the event of the authorization by such governing board, the issue of such obligations for such capital improvement are certain as required by law to be subject to a permissive or mandatory referendum only if such obligations are to the maturity of more than five years. We're not less than.
I think you can determine anything that's by sending.
Or it may be the difference between a ban and a wire.
No, no, I, I think, I think probably you can, you can decide anything is gonna be, go to a permissive referendum.
Correct.
So, if you say three years, you've just decided that you're gonna send that to a permissive referendum?
All we're doing is changing the timeframe potentially.
Yeah, right, but one is, one is a, a requirement of the law of the state of sewer. And if you change it to three, it's gonna be a requirement of the Board of Trustees.
Right.
Which is okay, because you can determine anything to be, I'll, I'll check, sure, that's correct. But my gut instinct is saying that you don't agree.
I mean, I suppose, it still is a motion of the board to get it out of the reserve.
Yeah.
It's just whether or not it goes to a permissive referendum or not.
Right.
Or is subject to a permissive referendum, I guess. Okay, I, I guess, whatever the answer is, we're gonna talk about it then.
I'm confused with the intent of that reserve with neutral, it's for a sole purpose of replacement of equipment.
Everything longer than that period of time, yeah, so it is the equipment and vehicle repair replacement fund.
Anything.
So, you're gonna buy a truck that's gonna last you seven years.
Flush truck.
Alright.
Flush truck could be, flush truck could be.
Well, anything that would have some sort of sewer related.
Correct, it would be, uh.
Or.
Uh, part of it could be a pickup truck. Uh, part of it could be a pickup truck, a pickup truck.
Or have a tool cat.
Yeah, have a tool cat.
Pretty much every vehicle that we have is, you know, tightly used towards, uh, towards sewer work.
Right.
Um, we just want to be able to take cash for that.
It's anything, exactly. Think of any piece of equipment, any vehicle, it's covered.
What about the generator at Wood Creek?
It would be covered.
For instance, would that be covered under that?
It's sewer.
Or the lift in the shop.
Correct.
Because you use that for...
Yeah, it would have a...
Wood Creek is a separate...
Wood Creek, the pump station, that's, but that's not the generator.
But not the generator. Oh, I got it.
The generator is backup power supply for...
So that the pump station would be covered, the generator would actually be up.
Come out of the general reserve.
Yeah.
But is the purpose of it is to...
It would cover it. Yeah, it would cover it.
Okay.
Great.
Not a day.
So in order to make any, uh, purchases of equipment, uh, using those funds, then they would have to go through a missing...
Only if it was for more than 3,000 bucks or 30,000 bucks. Oh, I'm sorry.
Three years.
Probably usefulness of three years.
Four, five isn't certain now. And it's just a question of what is that period that we wanted to have to come before us for a vote and to be subject to the permissive referendum?
Always gonna have to come before the vote.
It always comes to us.
And then it's gonna be...
Just a board, it's not a public...
Well, only running around, all the challenges it...
Yeah.
And they may or may not. I mean, it, it's just the option to do that.
Yeah.
Yeah. And the nice thing, so here what you're saying is all I'm really doing here is giving the public the optionality, if they wanted to, to request the referendum for the purchase of a $60,000 Kubota that's only gonna last four years. Right. I did have a question on creating a sewer fund building repair reserve.
Because sewer uses this building.
Well, I know that.
So that's it.
Yeah, I know that.
Is that the sewer building replacement improvement?
No, there's a creating a sewer fund building repair reserve. This is essentially the sewer chipping in to help us out in the village, all repairs. Makes sense. But the question that I had, and I saw it in other reserve language somewhere else, uh, in the third paragraph, be it further resolved, last sentence, "The purpose of the reserve fund is to accumulate money to finance the cost of any and all repairs required to make to all buildings and structures owned by the Pittsburgh, uh, Village of Pittsburgh." I think the all should instead say, "All buildings utilized by the sewer system and structures owned by the Village of Pittsburgh." So there's another point in the reserves where it specifically said buildings utilized by the sewer system. Or maybe I saw it, uh, in doing some research. But the all buildings, there are certainly some buildings that may be here in the village, such as gazebos, that...
I don't know that a gazebo is defined as a building.
Maybe we build one structure.
It's just easier to say building and structures utilized by the sewer.
Perfect. It's a little more specific. I think that's all I know. Great, thank you.
Thank you.
That was good, it was good discussion too. Thanks for the heads up on the litigation. I guess it's a good one.
There we go.
Okay. Everybody clear on action items? Any other questions?
Maybe action. I would go, I know.
Okay, yeah, no, I know, it's, you know, it's a fight and opposition.
So is that a, how many more?
Four more, four. I don't know how to count them between three fingers, it's four.
I think it's all in the beginning of the reserve.
Well, there's a great number of reserves to have, yeah.
Yeah.
And considering the fact that Monroe County has none, we're way ahead of the county.
Nice.
That was a discussion I had with Howard. Okay.
I don't know. Good.
All right.
You don't have much infrastructure in there.
Okay, so, oh, next up, the multi-year capital planning RFP. Do you have an update?
I do have an update. Um, as of today, I know we are gonna be getting a bidder.
No.
Great.
Okay, we're gonna, I'm sorry, say that?
It's gonna be a bidder.
Oh, good, okay.
Okay, thank you. Any other...
That's all I got, okay.
Well, no, that's, that's an update.
We, we did share, we, we talked about last meeting, we shared the spreadsheets we have. We're still working on those until we really have the contractor in place. I mean, there's really nothing more to update.
Yeah.
Do you do that in Excel?
They are in Excel.
Could you send out that again? I, or maybe, for some reason it got converted when I saved it personally and then I might have deleted the email. I saved it personally.
Yeah, I'll resend. You know what, honestly, I don't know if I sent it to more, I think I sent it to you and you sent it to more.
Send it to everybody.
I'll send it out.
Yeah, let's send it out to the board.
I need to put into...
I mean, I already have copies.
And I can't use that at all.
No, we'll send it back out.
Okay. And Zach, I'm at, um, any word on street or estimates from the town who is helping us out or however that was going?
The roads edition survey?
Yeah.
Yeah, so actually I held that in last Friday.
Great.
So, yeah.
Another piece, which is great.
Yeah, it's huge actually. Um, but everything really coincides with, uh, what we had discussed.
Yeah.
Great.
Excellent.
All right.
Okay, number items.
I have one and it's outstanding. It was an email that I sent, but we talked about it before. I'd really love from somebody to get a list of all the things that are needed when we start construction over at 75 Monroe and who the village has hired to do the work and what firm they work for. Right now, I feel like sometimes I'm just getting first names. I'm not really sure what all those action items are. I don't know if that Steve can put all that together for me. But it'd be real nice to see, these are all the things that happened during the building process that need to be done. Here's all the professionals that are doing it and here's all the companies they work for.
Okay. I mean, yeah, we, we talked about that internally too. And then I know, uh, you received a copy of the tolling agreement, am I correct?
Yes, I did receive a copy.
Okay, so that was signed. So, you know, I think, I think it's gone a little quiet, um, just because they now know they have some breathing room with the tolling agreement too. But we should, we can pull this together for sure. And Scott Harder can help us with Steve and all.
Yeah.
Because he's, yeah, so he's, because he's, yeah, he's got a point for some. Okay, number items?
I'm gonna stick my nose in. I'm gonna stick my nose in.
Oh, please do.
I would like to know, our board, who's paying for this?
Yeah.
That's part of the, part of the discussion with Spitzer that he's having. That was in our...
Yeah.
Yes.
With the board, that's what he had.
Who's doing it, who's being?
That's...
Yeah.
Spitzer's on it, thank you. Okay, now number items.
No number items for me.
Number item, any number items? Minutes?
Why, yes, we do have minutes.
Why indeed?
Why indeed? These two sets of minutes right now, we have November 20th and December 12th. We haven't gotten January, so we have, it's coming. So I'll just need it for both of these.
Okay, so are there any questions or is there a motion?
Can we just, uh, open my notes?
Yeah, yeah, sorry. So the first set is for which, uh, November 20th.
Special meeting we have.
That's right, okay.
I don't have any comments on that. I'll, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for November 20th.
My second.
Was I there with that one?
Yeah, you were there.
You, thank you.
Uh, hey, trustee Liken?
Aye.
Trustee Laffier?
Aye.
Trustee Coe?